We will now call the July 20, 2016 Norco City Council Meeting to Order. All council persons save Berwin Hanna are present. Berwin is out tonight. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Robin Grunmeyer, who will also do our invocation. Thank you.
You're a star.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and assume an attitude of prayer. Lord, we thank you that we're part of a country that we can come together freely and discuss our opinions and matters of government and have our input. Lord, I hope and pray that you would allow those of us up here to make our decisions wisely and in the best interest of our residents, and you would give us the wisdom to do that. Lord, I also would pray for the residents of this city that they would see that the city staff and council works hard for the folks of this city and that we would like everyone to come together and work together for the betterment of the city and all the residents of the city. Lord, there's differences of opinion. There's all types of matters that we deal with. And I just pray that we, as adults, would be positive role models for everyone and other communities around us, that Norco can come together and agree to disagree and agree to move forward in an effort to make our city the amazing place and best place in this area to live. I just pray, Lord, that you would give us guidance and direction as we work through our agenda this evening and that you would be with us. And again, Lord, please give us wisdom as we make these decisions that affect so many people in the environment in which they live, the finances of their home and their daily lives. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Following the next presentation, we're going to have a presentation from the American Legion, but right now I'm going to call up Scott DeRosa, and we're going to be honoring our business of the month. I'm also going to bring up Greg Vineyard, Norco High graduate, and Ed Ortega.
Turn it on. Very proud of the work that our community does to help foster the growth of business or to our business community. We know that the businesses here in Norco are a major lifeline to our city's economic success. In return, it makes our work very worthwhile when businesses like State of Brothers declare their love and loyalty to Norco and the local neighborhoods that they serve. So I am proud to present these certificates to the business, certificates of business appreciation to Greg Vineyard, manager of Hamner Avenue Store, and Ed Arctiaga, the assistant manager of the River Road Store. Thank you so much for everything you do for our community.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
Let me say a couple of words here just for a second. I know Greg better than I know you, sir, but I shop over there, too. Greg is the guy that I suck, I mean, I'm sorry, that I help get arranged for our Thanksgiving and Christmas dinners and New Year's. He gives us a hand through the Kiwanis, and we get a whole bunch of turkeys. We get money knocked off and all kinds of stuff. And I just, we've been doing that now for, what, six years, something like that. And I really want to, we really appreciate that as a Kiwanian. So I'm going to let Scott present these to you guys. I bet you didn't bring one camera, did you? So now we're going to kind of go off-agenda in the Ring of Lewis, American Legion, to have something very special to tell us.
My name is Lewis Wright from the American Legion. I'm here tonight to donate a check to the city from the Memorial Day Event Committee and the generous sponsors of the Memorial Day. Any monies left over after the Memorial Day have been paid for will go to the city. The check is in the amount of $1,018. That check is earmarked to go to maintenance of the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza. My honor to pass it over to whoever gets it. Brian, I should have given it to him before.
I'm just going to hand it to him.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just so we get the thing right, it's L-E-W-I-S, correct, Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to City Council Communications, reports from Regional Boards and Commissions. You know what, Robin, I'm going to start with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Monday, attended the California League of Cities meeting. This was the first one where we didn't have to drive down to the desert, so it was pretty exciting. We were over in Eastvale at their community center. Very interesting times for the California League of Cities. They're in the process of searching for a new executive director, which is a pretty extensive process that they're going through for that. There have been some openings on some of their boards that they discussed at that meeting, and then they also discussed upcoming legislation, the marijuana initiative that's on the ballot. That was an interesting discussion. The League of Cities had asked to meet with the people that wrote that particular initiative, and during those meetings, we're able to kind of negotiate with them some items. So at this time, it sounds like League of Cities because the writers of the ballot measure did concede some things and make some changes. So League of Cities, because they've done that, they have not made a final decision on whether they're going to support that or not, but they've been advised since there were some concessions made that they should probably support the measure because they went in and lobbied for those concessions. And then if they don't support it, they've kind of negated their lobbying power. So it'll be interesting to see how that particular issue plays out with the League of Cities and their endorsement of that particular legislative matter. We were able to listen to a variety of speakers on bringing healthy initiatives to cities, things like parks, walkways, providing services and organizations to promote people getting out and being healthy and active within their communities. So it was nice to hear from the different cities on some of their initiatives and things that they've done to promote those types of activities.
Great, Ted?
Thank you, Mayor. I got to be Berwin this week, too, so I don't have the jula down, right? But let me see if I can get through this. I went to the Riverside County Transportation Commission and just to report that this weekend, the eastbound 91 Lincoln Avenue off-ramp and the westbound Lincoln Avenue on-ramp will be closed Friday, July 22, 9:00 p.m. to Monday, July 25, 4:00 a.m. So just so you're aware of that, it was one of the things that came out of the commission. The other thing next week is we will be starting, I'll be attending in lieu of Mr. Hanna for the I-15 carpool commuter lane that's going to be constructed in Caltrans. All the cities that are along I-15 will be attending, and we will just, it's an ad hoc committee meeting to see what they're coming up to until they're finished. So that'll be a meeting I'll be attending next week. The, moving on to the other passion of Mr. Hanna is the mosquitoes. Just recently, from the Riverside County, the Northwest Nectar Control, they will be spraying for mosquitoes on July 22, that's Friday, from 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. along River Road and Cordone. It's in the Corona area, but if you have residents over there, just be aware they're going to be spraying over there. They're also going to be spraying in the Prado Basin, so that you're aware of that. So if you see them, any planes, or they're starting to use drones or any trucks out there, that's what they're doing from 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. on Friday morning. Recently, also, from the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control, there was an update to a press release that they did, and that came out today. As you well know, I'll just read this because it's easier than trying to paraphrase it. They have, the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District has detected the invasive yellow fever mosquito in Western Riverside County. This species was recently found on July 19 in the city of Corona near Village Grove Lake. This is the second detection in the district where the yellow fever mosquito has been found. If you have any experience having day-biting mosquitoes, please contact the district, and I'll write this number down. I'm sure Cheryl's got it on the website, 951-340-9792. The mosquito is not native to California. It's a small, black and white day-biting mosquito. It prefers to feed on humans. This mosquito is capable of transmitting several viruses, including the yellow fever, denji, Zika, and, don't even ask me how to pronounce this, another virus. While these viruses are not currently transmitted in California, there's a potential for them to be introduced by infected international travelers. In this age of global commerce, this mosquito has found several paths into California. It has been detected in 12 counties and 56 cities throughout the state. So, and then also today, they also had a person at LA County that had, was tested positive for West Nile. So West Nile's out there. I'm not going to go through this whole thing, but just be on the aware to take care, to drain your excess water, watch out for pooling water, don't let these mosquitoes breed. The Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control has mosquito fish for you if you have ponds, tubs for your water troughs and things like that. So there's a lot that you can do. Don't let the swimming pools get neglected. Take care of this mosquito. We don't need it here in our county. Right along, this is mine, finally, myself and Berwin along with the other members of the staff. This Saturday, the National Day of the American Cowboy is, that will be held on Saturday, July 23, at the George Ingalls Equestrian Center, and we invite you to come out for a family fun-packed event and to celebrate our Western heritage in the American Cowboy. This year, we're going to start off at 3:00 p.m. with the Pacific Coast Junior Bull Riders. That's a little change this year, so come out and watch the bull riders first thing. They're going to be bucking off their sheep and their bulls and their calves. And then we're going to also start with the sorting. There'll be team sorting this year, and then some Jim Cana events and the obstacle course, along with the ribbon racing, and they'll all be done in Clark Arena. And then at 5:00 p.m., we're going to have our grand opening, and they're going to have our 50-flag team out there and watch them Monday night, and they look great. The stagecoach will be back. The sheriffs, Stan Smith, will be there along with Captain Jason Horton as they shoot them up bang-bang. So that'll start. I don't know, Eric, are you going to help them?
No, sir, I will be there, but I will not.
Okay, I just don't know if you were the reloader or what are you going to do, okay. But along with that, there's crafts and food vendors, couch chip throwing contests, and this year, we will check to make sure nobody cheats in the couch chip throwing contest. Yeah, we had cheaters before. We have chuck wagon races. Those are new this year, pulled by teams from Yule, so come on out, and it's a lot of fun. Councilwoman Grunmeyer over there will have the kids' wagon race and boot scramble. And our fire department's giving teams, I don't know if the sheriffs, they're bringing the fire explorers out. I didn't hear anything from the sheriff's explorers.
Explorers will be there.
Okay, so we do now have teams competing against each other. So you have fire and police competing against each other. There'll be calf dressing. If you're interested in putting a team together, you know, it's got to be at least two men and one woman, or hey, two women, one man. It doesn't, I'm not picky, but come on out and join in on the fun. And then there'll be a drill team out there. So it'll be a lot of fun, and then we're going to finish it off with a Hands-to-Horn Combat, which is an extreme rodeo team made up of bullfighters who are actually on active-duty military and veterans who will be forming in the famous Ring of Fire and the Toro Totter. All right, and it's pretty cheap. It's five bucks admission, $2 to park your car, so you can't beat it. And I was up there today, and trust me, at 2 and 3 o'clock, it's not that hot, and it's all under the cover. So come on, enjoy it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Greg?
Thanks, Kevin. On that note, on Day of the Cowboy, that I need to challenge you to regain your title.
I'll try.
Okay. So no pressure on that, but just very, he deserves one. Just very briefly, this Monday, Director Public Works and myself had a telephone conference, RICWA Board Meeting, primarily closed session items, and there were no reportable actions from that telephone conference. Last, July 7, had our Chino Disalter Authority Board Meeting, and just basically went over different agreements. We are now about 50% done on completion of all our capital projects, and that grand total is running approximately $146 million in water projects, and everything seems to be tracking right along. And the last item on that, the saga of getting across the Santa Ana River with our pipelines, that has been going on for years and years. The direction now is, they're looking at, the board's considering doing directional boring underneath the river. We had talked about going over the bridge, all different scenarios. It seems now we're going to look at directional boring, and stay tuned. That's all I have, Kevin, thanks.
Is that drill still down there?
Oh, and if anyone's interested, there is a quarter of a million-dollar microtunneler buried under the bottom of the riverbed at approximately 25 feet. File your environmental reports and have at it.
Just remember, there were two bridges.
Yep.
Because they ran into a bridge, now there's another way to run into.
And your name has come up in our board meetings as our historian, and I don't know if they've ever contacted you, Kevin, but it's still rolling the dice.
Yeah, I got a bunch of stuff I can give them. For myself, I'm with Riverside Conservation Authority, no reportable action there. I was also at the Western Riverside County Region Council and Governments Recra. All we talked about was the HERO program, again, no reportable action. Today, the Chamber of Commerce, we had quite a gathering at the Silver Lakes, their annual, their monthly meeting. It was very nice. I see Tyler Medaries back there with Senator Roth. He was very influential in getting that project done. He was there, I mean, practically the entire staff for the Corona Norcommunified School District, several businesses. If you haven't been out there in a while, it's becoming increasingly amazing. I also, given, it was actually hard. I went to the Riverside County 198th graduating class for deputy sheriffs, and given what had just occurred, it was a very moving ceremony. And the keynote speaker was the police chief for the city of Riverside, and he was amazing. He was an amazing speaker. And you just found yourself just hoping that those graduates would be safe. And one guy in particular, after 20 years in Marine Corps, 50 years old, had graduated as a deputy, and he got the award for the most inspirational deputy, and he looked like a Marine, man. He was like, whoa. And then, of course, the graduate, the class graduate, the number-one graduate of the class was also a Marine. So the Marines had it that night. That's all I have, but before I move on, I want to turn the floor over to Eric Brittick. He has some announcements for us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. Cheryl, is it possible to bring up the banner with the events? There's a couple of events I want to make sure everyone's aware of involving your Norco Sheriff's Office. The first one takes place next week, Wednesday, July 27, from 9 to 11. It's called Coffee with a Cop. And basically, that enables each of you, the community, to sit down with the deputies that patrol your streets. So you can kind of break bread over coffee. You can talk, you can discuss the concerns that you have in your neighborhood. But again, you're speaking to the deputies that patrol your streets, and it's very, very valuable that they hear directly from you, and you're able to understand how they do their job and what's behind it. So again, I want to thank the Cowgirl Cafe for hosting the event. There will be free coffee there. I would encourage everybody to have breakfast there while they're talking to us, but it's a really good platform. I will not be speaking. It's the deputies that you need to hear from and talk to. I will introduce them to you, and I'll make sure that everyone understands how it goes, but I will not be speaking. It will be the deputies. So again, that's Coffee with a Cop, next Wednesday, July 27, Cowgirl Cafe, from 9 to 11 a.m. The second event I want to talk to you about is what we call National Night Out. That is a large event that's going to be taking place in the Target parking lot in Norco, August 9, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Basically, this is a great event. Again, it's for the community, for the public, to come and get to know your deputies, but not just your deputies, but what's behind the sheriff's department. We're going to have a number of our different departments there, including SWAT, our bomb team, our K-9 team will be there. We'll also have Riverside County Cal Fire there. City of Norco will be there with a number of departments and so on. So again, it's a great time to come out, get to know your first responders and your city. There'll be carnival and games, there'll be fingerprinting, there'll be things for the kids to participate, and really, it's about families and children. So please, join us on that night. We'll have a good time. We'll be able to talk about things that are happening in the city, and you'll get to see what resources the Norco Sheriff's Office, the Riverside County Sheriff's Office provides. Again, that is August 9, 5:00 p.m. through 7:00 p.m. in the Target Parking Lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. It's easy for you to say, Target Park E-Lock. Target Park E-Lock. All right, moving on to the City Council Consent Items. Does anybody wish on the council wish to pull one of these items?
D.
D?
Go ahead, Robin.
And K, please.
Which one?
K.
K.
Motion to approve the rest if there are any.
Do we have any cards on this?
No cards.
Greg, you're D, and Robin's K.
Councilmembers Grunmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Greg, you're the number D.
Thank you, Kevin. The reason I pulled this is, and I know personally, at times, we get caught up in all my work or our work, and I just want to acknowledge to Gina and your staff what a great job you're doing with our investment portfolio and the increase that we've seen this last quarter. So just kudos to you and your staff. You're doing a really, really good job.
I'd like to second that. Thank you. Motion to approve that item?
Second.
Second.
Councilmembers Grunmeyer, Hoffman? Mayor Portem Newton? Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Robin, K.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in reference to looking to have a service agreement for a rate study for water and sewer rates. And I had emailed Chad the other day, or yesterday, sorry, late. But I would like Chad, if you could, to briefly discuss why you feel it's important that we spend the money for the rate study at this point in time with the finances, kind of the way they are, so that I can understand and everybody, the residents, can hear now or watch later why this would be an important issue.
Sure. Yes, for this recommendation, we're looking to hire Hoxley Consulting to perform three rate studies, which is water, sewer, and create a new rate schedule for our recycled system that we're developing and looking to someday operate. But we need to have a rate available to go so when customers are using that water, that we can charge them appropriately. And it's important, especially right now, in the fact that in our most recent budget that was approved, we highlighted to council that during '15-'16, we had a significant deficit, almost $2 million shortfall, and we're projecting a similar deficit, again, for '16-'17. And it's, at this point, we need to get that shortfall reduced significantly, and the most likely way we're going to achieve that goal is through a rate analysis, determine how and what mechanism we'll use to potentially increase rates to get that revenue that we need to reduce that shortfall. So, and the importance of hiring a consultant versus doing it in-staff is simply you get an independent expert opinion that's of someone who's basically going to forensically go through our expenses, our projected for the next five years. They'll look at our past history to understand what we've done, because they're going to do an overall, a 10-year, maybe even 20-year look at where we need to go, but mainly, they're focused on the next five years. So they're going to be working with staff heavily to understand what projects we have planned on the capital side, just an O and M where our expenditures are, and understanding what our revenue sources are and where we're projecting to be. And they're going to give us a thorough vetting to verify that we have the right expenses and expenditures in the right places, that we're doing a cost allocation to the right customer classes so that everyone's paying their, quote, fair share. So getting, and I think when you're doing any type of rate study, because it is often a very personal issue for everybody because it affects your pocketbook, it's very important to get an industry expert that can give you a very rounded and frank opinion about where we stand and work with the city on helping develop solutions that they have dealt with in other locations and other localities to say, here's our suggestions on how maybe you can achieve the goals you're looking for, which is, again, to be fiscally sound from the immediate future and moving forward. So having that independent expertise, I think, is well-paid for when they're presenting the options to the public and the council and they're able to address your questions, and also deal with the legal aspects of, because a lot of the rates have been heavily litigated, whether they're appropriate, whether they're legal, whether they're too much, can you do this type, can you do that type? And their experts in understanding all the various rate cases that have come up can provide the legal opinion, a justification of why we can do this, we can't do that. And versus staff, giving our opinions, which are usually the same, but having an independent person, there's a little more credibility to it. Not that we couldn't do it, but it's just, I really think when you have, they have a lot more resources than we do. They have staffs of 20s to 30s that can work on us and get this thing done. Plus, the biggest thing for us is we're trying to get this done in a very short period, and we're trying to get everything buttoned up and done and approved, hopefully by the end of December, to have any type of changes done and implemented by January. That is normally half the normal schedule timeframe we give for rate studies. So we're basically asking them to take our information, massage it, come back to us within almost two months, and then spend the next two months working it out amongst staff and the council and the community to figure out where we need to be and hopefully, and come to a consensus. So you're getting a good value for what they are proposing to prepare.
Just a couple of questions. So it's three independent studies for this amount of money. When reading the staff report, they're going to give us options on each of those three rate studies, like whether we want to spread it out over five years or doing, you know, one large immediate increase and all that stuff, correct?
There'll be a smorgasbord of all kinds of options, and we'll actually be able to, in some of the workshops we're trying to do, we'll actually can make other alternatives or suggestions, and they'll do the analysis on the fly in their model, and can quickly show you that if we did this, this is what would happen. And so you don't have to wait for another meeting to get those results. So it's really timely information so you can make a good decision based off of what you, the question you may have asked.
Okay, and then my last question. So they're going to look at the shortfall, and then you had mentioned capital improvement, too. So is that kind of in their realm or scope of what they're studying as well? Not just putting a Band-Aid over what we have now, but looking into the future and our capital improvement needs will be kind of incorporated into these studies as well?
Yeah, realistically, we're looking at, obviously, we want, what I'm tasking them to do is to look at our O and M, make sure that we're at least even every year, but realistically, we're looking for a buffer of $500,000, $1 million a year in O and M that we're generating. In addition to that, we're looking for additional funds that is going to be helping fill in our coffers for our capital every year. We have millions and millions of dollars of capital projects that we need to do, and obviously, right now, we're not putting any money in that fund. And then we're looking, having them look at the possibility of doing additional rate reserves, which is building up a separate reserve that can be used on these downturns we have, maybe not getting enough sales. You take that money. You take that money, fill in that gap, and you're not raising rates. And it's usually kind of a one-time thing, but that helps you in that cycle. So we're going to look at multiple options. Doesn't mean we have to adopt all or any of them, but in the council will be able to decide, okay, we do want to do this piece, but not this piece, or we want to do this piece, but we want to phase that part in. There'll be all kinds of scenarios that we'll try to button down into what we think are maybe three to five reasonable options to consider, and then we work from those versus having 20. It could be some long meetings, so we'll focus them on what we think is the target goal, but they're going to look at the whole gamut of what we need to be.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ted, please.
And Chad, when I met with you the other day, we talked about this. This confirmed that this is actually going to go to the Streets, Trails, Utility Commissions prior to us seeing it right, so they get a chance to review. The public's going to have opportunities to see this thing before it actually comes to us for any final, correct?
In the tentative schedule right now, we've planned a joint meeting between Streets and Trails and the council to meet together as one forum, to hear the information at that same time, give feedback, and then we'd have probably at least another meeting with council directly, presenting the revisions of that, of the proposal after that discussion. And then if it gets formalized at that point, we would bring it to a final council meeting through a 218 process in basically late December. But that process is not set in stone. If it's determined the council wants additional meetings, we can do that. It just would push our timeline out probably into the next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, Greg.
Briefly, I just wanted to thank the director for his time. I approached him with maybe a different attitude. It seemed why spend money on something that was known? And we had a long and productive conversation, so you did a good job. And so I certainly support this.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Here, a second.
Councilmembers Grundmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just for a moment, just before we move to public comments, Eric, who's the deputy that's out there?
Arturo Mendez.
You know, given what's going on right now, I want to thank you, Arturo, for protecting us. Thank you very much. Moving on to public comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. You'll have three minutes. How many cards do we have?
We have about six or seven. I want to apologize in advance for any mispronunciations. So if I do mispronounce your name, please, when you come forward to the podium, please restate your name for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Bash and the City Council of Norco, thank you for listening. My name is Dr. Kupali Tejura. I was born in America, raised in Corona, attended a Calvary Christian school until it closed when I was in the second grade, and then went on to attend public schools in the Corona-Norco Unified School District. I'm a proud graduate of Corona High. I went on to college at USC on a full academic scholarship afterwards, and then continued my further education at medical school at UCLA. Was valedictorian of the class, and then went on, further carried my studies at the National Institutes of Health in DC, and did postgraduate training in the specialty of radiation oncology, treating cancer. After getting my training, I came back to Corona to practice and take care of the community members in Corona, Norco, and the surrounding areas. I've been in the Corona-Upland area for almost a decade. I'm an assistant professor at City of Hope, and I'm the medical director at San Antonio Regional Hospital in Upland. In my years of treating cancer in this community, I may have treated you, your family members, your loved ones, your friends, or colleagues. My CV is available, and I will hand it to the city clerk for your convenience. That will be addendum A. The reason why I'm here today is that my family and I are Hindu. They raised me in Corona. I still went to a Calvary Christian school, read the Bible, but we are practicing Hindus. I believe all is one. My father is a local pediatrician, and he's been here for over 35 years. So he may have treated your kids or even your grandchildren. I have recently been made aware of the unanimous, repeated rejection for permission to build a Hindu temple in the city on land already owned by the interested party. A review of the City Council and the mayor's objections to building this building and this place of worship is very concerning to me, not only as a citizen of America, but as a Hindu, the Hindu community, and other citizens of this area also. The unanimous vote by this council against building this temple is extremely distressing to me on several levels, not the least of which is the infringement upon the First Amendment. It is clearly not in the best interest for you or your town to bring this type of scrutiny to the city and this community. I need you all to be aware that several news sources have already been contacted, and a formal complaint to the ACLU has been made. At this point, we could spend the remainder of my discussion reviewing Mayor Bash's comments that are documented in print in an article in the Press Enterprise dated July 19th, 2016, or we can come together and address this as rational human beings and discuss how we can resolve this issue in a mutually beneficial manner. The choice is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kanu Tejura, and I'm a pediatrician here, deciding in Corona for the last 40 years. And I believe in unity and diversity. Though we have different religions, the God is one. And that's what here also, when we pray, we said under one God. So let all different faith exist, and we should not discriminate or have negative attitudes toward different believers. And let all religion flourish. As I said before, I believe in unity and diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just have a first name of Darshana.
Respectable mayor.
Could you pull your microphone down so we can hear you?
And the council members. My comments are exactly regarding the building of the Hindu temple. I guess, reading your comments and the concerns from my brothers and sisters of Norco citizens, I recommend that you read more about Hindu religion. Hindu religion is a religion of peace, love, and following, and letting people live peaceful life. In the history of our Hindu religion, Hindus are never involved in any terrorist activities. No religion is bad. We just have diversity, and we have different methods to praise the same Lord or pray the same Lord. So I request your kind attention, that you read more about Hinduism before you make any decision about this temple. We have our same religion, same values, love, peace, righteousness, and letting other people live peacefully. Therefore, if we are vegetarians, there is no grounds for us to be denied to build a beautiful temple. This temple is going to bring high values in this community, and also, it will promote your tourism of this beautiful city, the herb living and the horse riding and all that stuff. Therefore, I really request you guys, making any decision negatively, read more about Hinduism and its values, and we will definitely appreciate your consideration. Thank you for giving me time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jeff Cahann.
Hi, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, council, residents of Norco, I'm here to promote the concerts. Friday is our next concert. We've had some really great concerts so far. We've had three great bands with three really great turnouts. And when we looked at the schedule, we purposely chose this Friday, the 22nd, for the band Sterling Silver. They play both kinds of music, both country and western. And that'll get you in the mood for the Day of the Cowboy the next day on the 23rd. So I just wanted to thank you for your support, again, publicly, as always. Thank Brian and his staff. Parks Department works hard to put these concerts on. It's a great community time for us to get together for free, free parking, free attendance. The Lions Club is up there serving food, along with all of our other great sponsors. So just a reminder to please come out, Pike's Peak Park, 6:00 on Friday, to see Sterling Silver. Now, I also have been nominated, since Pat overstreets out of town, to remind you and to remind everyone about the Town Hall that Rural is sponsoring. It'll be on Monday, July 25th, at 6:30 at Nellie Weaver Hall. And it's a quarterly Town Hall meeting where different topics will be discussed. It's a chance for the residents to come and ask questions and hear what's going on around town. So again, I thank the city for helping put those on and for the different organizations around town, and in this case, it'll be Rural for hosting these. So again, Monday, the 25th, at 6:30. So we have a great weekend of all sorts of different community events coming up. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jeff. Hi, Bonnie.
Good evening. About a year ago, I believe, when Glenn was president in Norco Horsemen's, I believe he met with Andy and proposed that we help fund the trail work done by the crew. And so now that that's happened, I've come to present you with a check for $2,500 tonight. So shall I just give it to Gina, and she's the one that gets it anyway?
No, I want to see it.
Oh. Boy, look at him move for money.
Whoa, look at that. That's very cool. Thank you. Hi, Julie.
Good evening. Julie Reyes with Waste Management. I'm here this evening to respond to a report we got of an issue with one of our drivers mixing manure and trash service during collection this past week. So I wanted to come before you. We were contacted by the city manager on Monday evening when we saw some of the activity on Facebook and an email that was sent by a resident. I first want to start off by saying that when all of our drivers are hired, we go through an extensive training process where we outline company guidelines, we talk about products that they're supposed to collect. Just to clarify, we do have a different truck and a different driver that picks up all commodities, so a different driver for trash, recycle, green waste, and manure. That was one of the questions that was asked, so I want to clarify that. However, I would state for the public, for the city, that it is intolerable and a terminable offense if we conduct an investigation and find that an employee is dumping two commodities at one time. So depending on the outcome of the investigation, the driver will be terminated. We take that very seriously. Diversion for all cities is very important. As your partner, it's a contractual obligation for us that we ensure that cities are meeting their diversion requirements. So again, it's something we take very seriously. I did want to reference a couple of comments that were also made. I saw some of the social media posts, so I just wanted to get it out there for the public and give some feedback. A couple references were regarding manure being a cash cow for waste management, that we make all this money. I just wanted to be clear, I think that the council's aware, most of the residents are aware, that Waste Management uses Veramontes. It is not affiliated in any way with Waste Management. They're their own entity. They charge us $19.75 per tonne to dispose of manure. There's no rebate, there's nothing that comes back to Waste Management. There's a charge for the service because there's a cost that we pay to dispose of the manure. There was also reference to Santa Clarita, which is another city that is serviced by Waste Management that provides manure service. It is true that there are different negotiations, but in this specific case, it's kind of apples and oranges. The processors that they use in the Santa Clarita Valley allow for manure and green waste to be mixed together. So they only have three trucks for service, one for recycle, one for trash, and green waste and manure is mixed together. Whereas as a processor that we use here in Norco, or Chino, the city limits, they require to be separate. We don't have a choice, we follow the processors. There's other processors in San Jacinto, it's the same thing. They don't want the commodity mixed. So in this case, you have another truck, another driver, which carries through to the expense. And then I also wanted to outline that, I know it might be something that you may not think about, but we on a regular basis, and we actually got a request from a customer this Monday, that they called and said, we use the wrong container for trash, we put it in our manure car, can you please, just this week? We have it documented, the customer called in, and they requested that service. So I appreciate the perception that sometimes it may appear that the driver's doing something he shouldn't, but in this case, the customer requested the service. Lastly, I just want to say, and my time is up, is that, again, the resident that called in, we are investigating it, we spoke to the drivers, we're doing a full investigation over the next two weeks, and I'll be coming back to you in three weeks for a follow-up on our findings.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Rosa Zaniga Green.
Hi, Rosa.
Hi. Good evening, Honora Romeo, members of the council and staff. I come to you in regards to not having been able to investigate the subject matter that I'm about to bring up, and that is the no parking signs that were placed along our area, where, my area where we live. And it's no parking signs along Cross Rail Lane over by the golf course, and some say at any time, and some say for entire block. However, there are, and we appreciate the city taking the action for not placing those no parking signs. What was perceived that those no parking signs would reduce the number of teenagers that would be parking and going up to the golf course at that end and playing along the golf course, or simply adults that also park there over the weekends. There's a lot of trash that's left behind. I've spoken to the golf course about it. You know, it is a public street, there are kids that are going up and playing golf up at that end. The golf course has said they've tried to watch what's taking place out there. Again, the no parking signs that were placed out there, it is a public street. My concern is how much, if they're not paying attention to them, maybe it's because there isn't any sign that says by city code ordinance? I'm not quite familiar with, you know, how the no parking signs work, other than from a construction standpoint, when you're, you know, putting up no parking because you're going to be working in the public right away. And it is per a code ordinance. But when there is a nuisance of teenagers going out and just, you know, hanging out, partying, drinking, the police department has, a couple of years ago, you know, has picked out some people out there. I called, and they did take an individual in because there was some drug paraphernalia. I learned that some of those kids were from our immediate neighborhood, and they just liked to go out there and play in the sprinklers. I had an opportunity to speak to some of the kids that were out there. I've been taking pictures, some license plates of cars that are out there. One of the kids came and spoke to me and my husband, and he said, this is a beautiful area, look at the scenery that we've got, look at the view, we have no other place to go. When I informed them that the no parking signs are there, you know, they need to pay attention to them, that the police will ticket them, that we're calling, neighbors are calling the police, and we're taking pictures because they're not obeying the signs, they basically said that they will let, you know, their friends know. But the more of a concern is there was a fire up there last weekend, and it looks like a car caught on fire. The fire ended up going towards part of the hills, it burned down the fencing. I haven't had a chance to investigate why this happened, but I need your help. We need your help in the neighborhood. I mean, this could have created a major fire that could have burned the entire back hill of, you know, the Andalusian side and along Cross Rail Lane. So I need some help, some understanding. What can we do? Can we ticket? Can we ticket these folks? You know, can we get more patrols?
You know what, I would recommend you speak to Eric.
Okay.
Okay?
All righty.
Thank you, Rosa, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Closed public comments. Moving on to 5A, Second Reading Zone Code Amendment 2016-01. Motion to approve.
Motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Skundmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Protem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 5B, Ordinance Number 1003, Second Reading Zone Code Amendment 2016-03. Motion to approve.
Councilmember Skundmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Protem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance Number 1004, Second Reading Code Change 2016-01. Motion to approve.
Councilmember Skundmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Protem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Item 6A, Discussion Action Items Establishing the Norco Youth Advisory Council. City Clerk.
Yes, Genus, you may.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Let's see if that clears up. At the March 2nd, 2016 City Council Meeting, Councilmember Skundmeyer, with the consensus of the City Council, requested that staff research options for the creation of a program that would increase the level of civic engagement of the youth in our community. This agenda item before you is for your consideration of a youth advisory council. What is a youth advisory council? It's a body of young people who provide counsel and support to the City Council and other bodies. This advisory council would engage young people and elevate their voices in policy discussions. And what we did, what staff did, is we modeled the youth advisory council after what we currently have in place with our city commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. And so, why create a youth advisory council? For obvious reasons, it gives a voice to the youth. And more than ever, teens and young adults are recognizing the importance and value of volunteering and becoming involved. It's an investment in the future of the youth and as well as the city. It prepares tomorrow's leaders. It also establishes a framework of leadership. It also shows the city's commitment to youth development. It also provides benefits to youth as well as the city. And for the youth, we have the benefits listed there. It creates new networks and partnerships with adults and their peers. And these networks are not just locally, but it could also be regionally. Their support system is broadened. Students currently have support systems at school, churches, at home with their families, sports groups, and so this would just add another level to their support groups. It builds confidence, and it's a way, it's an avenue for youth to demonstrate maturity and independence, not only to adults, but their peers. It develops life skills such as leadership, public speaking, negotiation skills, teamwork, conflict resolution, time management, organization. We can go on and on. And so, these are benefits that, they look great on college applications, on resumes. And just equally important is just the value of getting involved. The benefits to the city. It raises awareness about issues affecting youth here in our community. It allows better representation of our young folks here in town. It also allows a better understanding of the programs that affect teens, and so, we're able to maybe improve on these programs and reach a wider audience and make a more authentic impact to our youth. Also, it forms a strong connection with youth. The result of young people feel like they're being heard will generate enthusiasm and greater community involvement. It also provides new solutions, different perspectives in decision-making. So, as I mentioned before, this youth advisory council is modeled, it's similar to other advisory councils in the region, and then what we currently have here at the city, other councils. And so, some of the general duties and responsibilities of this youth advisory council would be to promote community involvement for the youth. The membership would review proposals and programming related to their issues. The youth advisory council would make recommendations to the various city commissions as well as the city council. And so, examples of what their scope is or reach, what they would be doing is, they would be partnering with schools on youth campaigns, they would work on outreach programs, it could be really anything youth-related, or voter outreach, volunteer programs, for example, maybe a youth service day, something that we're also considering maybe having this group implement or reintroduce, the city used to do as a youth and government day. They could also participate in mentoring programs, also shadow department heads, maybe for a week or two, and learn more about the workings of local government. So, the eligibility and composition of this advisory group, they'd have to be a Norco resident, a student enrolled, they can be grades nine through 12. And we're recommending either from the Norco High School or John F. Kennedy Mill College High School. And so, the applicants would submit an application, similar to our other commissions and EDAC, along with letters of recommendation. They would have the ability to regularly attend meetings and other events. This would be, it's recommended to be a nine-member advisory council, which would include officers, chair, vice-chair, and a secretary. The secretary would be responsible for taking minutes and providing that record to the city clerk's office. The meeting schedule will be determined by the membership, allowing them to make that decision based on their availability, but that would have to come back to city council for approval by resolution. The support that this advisory council would have would primarily be with a deputy city clerk and the city clerk's office. Also, department liaisons, department heads, and that's just if the youth advisory group has recommendations to a specific commission, they would work closely with the department head to get that support. We're recommending a term of one year, which would follow the academic school year, October through May. The reason why we chose October initially, since the council approves this advisory council, we would advertise and publicize with the schools, beginning in August, have a recruitment period beginning in September, and then the appointment and the term begins in October. So, the recommendation is to approve resolution or adopt resolution 2016-52 approving the creation of the Norco Youth Advisory Council.
Available for any questions?
Any comments for questions for city clerk?
Thank you, Cheryl. I'm so excited about this. Cheryl and Andy, we met a while ago and discussed some options about this and what we could I think it's probably pretty obvious to those that are regular attendees at city council meetings that we don't have a lot of youth involvement in our city government. So, I think bringing in the students to kind of advise on things would be great. I know a lot of times I sit in meetings with a room full of adults and they say, "Well, teens think this, and teens think that," and I go, "Hmm, no, I work with them every day, they don't." So, I think it's going to be a good idea to bring them in so that we can actually get the information from the teenagers themselves. And any of you that have been to several different schools, Norco's a really, really special place, and people that walk onto that campus will tell you, it's like a family there, it's not like any other place they've ever been. And our students are good students. They're going to make mistakes like all teenagers do, but I think bringing those students in and having them participate, it's going to empower them. Like Cheryl said, they're going to give us new ideas and new ways to see things that, as we get older, we don't see and we don't think about because we start to get closed in in our boxes, and the kids haven't put themselves in boxes yet. And I think even on some of these issues that we're dealing with now, they don't have all the things kind of weighing down on them, so they have a different perspective. And I think they can offer a lot of insight to us as we're working through these things. And so, again, I can't tell you how excited I am about this. I think it's going to be a great thing for the city. I think we'll see an increase in volunteers, I think we'll see an increase in activities and different events that the students are going to want to have. So, thank you for putting this together.
Any other comments? Ted?
Yeah, Cheryl, good job. Robin, good job. You know, as a Norco High grad, and probably because of the '60s, I remember Norco High had, hey, don't make fun of them, they had, we had Circle K to the Kiwanis Program, we had Interact to the Rotary Program. And that's where I got my first introduction into student government, into the government processes. So, this is good, I'm glad this is coming back because we need that. I just have a couple of questions real quick. Is, and I don't know how you structured, and Robin, you can correct me for a while, they're Norco High students only, it doesn't matter, do we have Norco High students that actually live outside of the city? I don't know.
Yes, we do. There's a lot of transfers to Norco High again because it's back to that whole thing.
I know, because of the specialized programs. And because they've gone to these specialized programs at these schools, I don't have a problem if, I don't want to just eliminate, but as long as it's Norco High, we don't just, I don't know how the other council feels, members feel, if we just have to make it Norco residents, or if it can be opened up to...
Norco High School students.
Norco High students. That's your call, I mean, if you're going to be part of this.
Well, you know what, we, on our memorial wall, we have two Norco High graduates who technically lived outside Norco, but they were Norco High graduates. And we made the determination that because they were Norco High graduates, they belong on the Wall of Honor. So, I don't have a problem with that.
No, I said, I went to, we had Corona students at ours, and we, you know, unincorporated, even from Eastvale and that, so I don't have, I just wanted to make sure that it's Norco High and not just, we open this up so they understand, I don't want them to think it's just Norco residents.
Sure, we can make that change.
Greg, what do you think? You good?
It's a great idea. I mean, we've been lacking in this direction for quite a while. And Robin, Cheryl, glad you brought it forward. Good job. Good job.
So, any cards?
No cards on this item.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilmember Skundmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Protem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to public hearing, 7A, Public Hearing Ordering the Continuation of Landscape Maintenance Districts and Confirming a Diagram and Assessment and Providing for an Annual Assessment Levy for Districts Number One, Beazer Track 28765, Number Two, Number Three, and Number Five. City Engineer. Dominic.
Good evening. Welcome to my annual presentation on these issues. We'll try to make some of this fun, but it probably will not be all the way through. District Number One is the Beazer Track, and this year, the budget actually has been reduced by about $800, $900 from what it was previous year. The assessment is going up by 1.7%, which is the CPI, which we'll see in every single district we talk about this evening. The budget reduction is basically due to some water savings. Unfortunately, the amount of assessment that is generated with the maximum assessment is still about $1,700 short of balancing. But fortunately, there is a reserve fund available to go ahead and make up that difference. District Two, which is the Western Pacific Track, and that's located over at the intersection basically of Norco Hills Road and Hidden Valley, that is the district we took, the 218 hearing last year, which failed, which we were trying to boost up the maintenance level in that district. And also try to replay the debt that was in that district that the city's general fund picked up the tab. At one time, we rose in the hole by about $50,000. This past year, it's got reduced down to 14, but it's back up to 18 after the anticipated close of June 30th of this year. The, how that occurred, on the fact that we were trying to make up the deficit, was that we were not maintaining the Equestrian Trail. We're putting some of the more money into the landscaping to keep the landscaping up. The Parks Department made the determination this year that the trail was a safety hazard, as it was maintained last year. So, this year, they've shifted a lot of the money that went into the landscaping, which was the stuff in between the curbs and the trail fencing and some of the slopes on Norco Hills Drive, into the trail maintenance. So, what has happened in there is that the budget actually has gone up a few thousand dollars from what it was last year. But again, the emphasis this year is going to be maintain the Equestrian Trail in a safe manner. What that means is that the assessment, maximum assessment of $625 and some change for each particular parcel in there will actually balance out the budget this year. By balance, yeah, we're short $400, but I consider that still a balanced budget. But again, we should note that the landscaping is not going to look as good in that district as it has in the past, but the trails will be maintained. District Three. District Three is commonly referred to as a Centrix Track, and that is basically located over on Hidden, Norco Hills Road. This particular track, the budget for this year has dropped from about $4,000, $5,000 from what it was the previous year, and that was all due to water savings. They moved back some of the water and were able to save some money. Unfortunately, even with the cost of living increase of the 1.7%, the district cannot, that assessment cannot balance out the budget, but there's reserves available for the $240 to $800 to make up that difference. And so, there's adequate reserves in that district, and so, nothing is deppening into the city general fund to pay for it. District Five, which is the Hawks Crest Track, fortunately for this one, the assessment, maximum assessment is approximately $1,050. That's the maximum assessment. But all we need this year is $894, so we're not even going to assess the maximum in that district, basically because the whole budget dropped from $59,000 due to $44,700 due to a lot of water savings and some tuning of the landscaping there done by the Parks Department. So, they've managed now to balance that one out. That one has a significant reserve, as does District Three, but there is nothing being put in there for trail fence replacement at that time. We asked that question during one of the public meetings that we had, and basically the response back was, "No, we don't want to start replacing our trail fencing right now, keep the money in reserve in case we need it." That's a quick overview of the four assessment districts that are up this evening, and I'll open it up for questions.
Do we have any questions, or Dominic?
LMD Two, what would be our plan to have the loan repaid?
The plan to repay the loan would be to reduce maintenance or reduce water consumption.
Okay, and at this point, we're not going to take those actions?
We're not taking that action over what we've already done.
Okay, so that loan will just still be outstanding, that balance?
Will be outstanding, yes, sir.
That balance?
Probably $18,000.
$1,000, okay. This is just, and I may be looking at this wrong, or it's a ticky, little ticky tack thing. On LMD Five, in your report, it says levied below the maximum of $1,045. On LMD Five, in your report, it says levied below the maximum of $1,045. On your Exhibit A, though, it said maximum allowed $1,047.
That could be a typo.
It'd be, okay. Just so you know.
My handwriting when it gets typed, fives look like sevens.
All right. Just so you know, I'm reading these charts. So my next question is, and you kind of touched on it at LMD Five, and I don't know if I'll get this across correctly, and there may be something more to it. Any of the LMD residents, okay, when you were talking about trail fencing, okay, that the LMD reserves accounts pay for and maintaining that trail fencing?
Yes.
So now throughout the rest of the town, let's say now we're finishing up the bluff area.
Okay.
And that fund is, or that fencing is being paid out of our capital improvement, our trail fund?
That is correct.
Correct. Or basically general fund?
That is all.
Okay. Which all residents participate in, whether it's a portion of property tax, sales tax, whatever. But like when we do the fencing improvements, like in the Peninsula area, that cost is shared by all residents in general. Okay? I guess what I'm getting at is, these LMDs have to pay for their own trail fencing through that LMD, but also they are contributing to replacement fencing in the rest of the town?
Seems logical.
In a theory. So it's just a thought that had come through my mind that they're kind of paying twice for fencing if you live in an LMD. One for your LMD and one in a supportive fashion for the rest of the town.
That is an argument that can be raised, yes.
I was just curious about that. Okay. I mean, but it doesn't affect this. It was just kind of something that crossed my mind in this review.
As of the development, that that system be put into, make sure that the LMDs have adequate money to repair fences and make them
Right. And I realize, you bought into it. Okay. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Hey Dominic. Well, being one of the only councilmembers that actually lives in an LMD area, I understand where Greg's coming. I'm gonna piggyback on that idea. Nope, I won't talk about LMDs anymore. All right. The LMDs, and for those of you that haven't had the experience of aluminum, they have two basic rules to go by. The Streets and Highway Code on the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, along Proposition 218, that basically governs everything that LMDs do. How they're processed, what engineers report, what council's authority, because they become the managing group for the LMDs, and what their responsibilities. I didn't understand this when I first started coming here, but I got to listen to Jody Weber and our city attorney, John Harper, go at it each time we had this discussion on LMDs. And so I figured, I guess I better learn what this beast is. And I did. And then I look at how LMD One, LMD Two, and even LMD Three are structured. If you don't structure them right in the beginning, they become disasters. And they're short. They're short on their assets, they're short on their ability to do the things they have to do. You're at maximum on these things. And maximum for those who don't, that means that's it. They need to go up, they need a Prop 218 hearing. That's how it has to be done, so we can increase their funding. What bothers me, and it bothered me last year with LMD Two, is the amount of funds that they're, you know, they're short, they have a deficit. And then we have to carry that deficit over each year. And then I look at what they cover. And I understand this was done by the developer. And the developer and whoever started this thing didn't allow enough for the continue on this, on the assessment in the beginning. And the maximums are short. And so that's why we have what we have. But then I look at all the benefits of the LMD and how it actually benefits the entire community in the city of Norco. And this is what's gonna piggyback on top, what Greg said. I look at LMD One, essentially, all they take care of is the Parkway in front of River Road, correct? That's it. That's their benefit. That's what the developer wanted. Public thoroughfare for the majority of people going through Norco to look at to make sure it landscaped's right. There's no really personal benefit to any resident living there, but that's what the development fees were had. LMD Two, our gateway into that, along North Hills and Hidden Valley Parkway. That is, that roadway is a benefit to all the cross traffic that goes to the hills, that heads into Corona, all the residents on the one, and Corona takes care of their side, that go to LMD Three and Four, that's up, and visit the golf course. They take care of that Parkway with the landscaping and the water and everything else. So they're actually paying for a benefit that, as we said, benefits the whole community of Norco. It looks good. LMD Three is the same way. They're also paying for that driveway that longed at the public exposure. Five doesn't, but, and even Four doesn't that much. They don't pay that much for it. My thought is on this, and I don't want to change this over now, but somehow we gotta get it looked at, that when you go through on your process on this thing, and I know there's a developer fees and how it was done, since it's a benefit to the entire city by making these things look good, can we sit there and look at these developer fees on, especially on One, Two, and Three, and look at their coverage of what they're actually paying for that is actually even a benefit to the city besides just the residents? So that we can, as a city, and we'll have to look at this in our budget for next year. Maybe there's no funds. But that we can partly look at this and work with the residents in those districts to take some of the burden off of them, so that they can get the better trails in their area and not have to pay for landscaping that the entire public is enjoying. That's my thought on it. And I don't know if that's legally possible. I don't, that would have to be a lot of reconfiguring. Because once they're short, they're short.
Either John or myself is gonna jump in at this stage.
Yeah, I mean, what you're saying, and kind of, at least I think, in a somewhat different way, is the general fund is, would subsidize the assessment. And that's clearly permissible, and that's one of the things the cities are struggling with, your comments. It's just the way the law allowed these districts to be set up, and nobody thought at a long term that, assuming the costs increased faster than the Consumer Price Index, that at some point, they're not gonna be covering the maintenance that they were originally intended to cover. But that said, cities that have had these longer than Norco have been subsidizing them a long time. It's really difficult to get, and we've gone through it once, a Prop 218 hearing where a majority of the residents agree that want to increase their assessment.
And I say that because I think we're, we have an August 10th deadline, and we're, that we can't change a lot of this now. But we're sitting here for the next 10 months that something can be done, so, because those districts are gonna be maxed out, and there is no fund. We're gonna end up supplementing them anyway, because they weren't done first, correct the first time, or they just don't have enough income. So what I'm getting at here is that when you, Dominic, sit there and look at it, and Brian, I know you're LMD with you, you'll talk with Hank and Bob back there, we have to look at this as a total picture, as a community. We have residents up there, it's like Greg was saying, not only pay their property tax, and they part of, you know, they live here in the city and they also their sales tax and everything else. So part of their fund does go to the CIP programs. They're also paying for their own. And I'm just trying to equal this out somehow, is that they have been supplementing and benefiting the city by putting in nice landscaping and maintaining it and paying for that. And I think that as a city, and Andy's looking at the financial numbers, probably wanting to wring my neck, but it is part of the thing, trying to keep these LMDs at least sustainable. So I'd like you to look at that over the next 10 or 12 months.
Yeah, well, if you recall, last year, probably the year before, that we had a meeting of all LMDs to talk about these issues and take a look at those that were running out of money and what we were gonna do about it. And, I mean, it's really ultimately a council decision, and that is probably the appropriate way to go, is go through the same process.
If I recall correctly at that meeting, I think you even brought up a city contribution to Norco Ridge Ranch Road as being an alternative to fund some of the increased landscaping costs. So that is a decision the council can direct staff to take a look at, which I believe you just basically have done, and, you know, reset up the benefit of a proportion that that actually supports the development versus what is general benefit. And that is commonly put into assessment districts where the general benefit is picked up by the city.
Mayor, if I may interrupt for
I mean, in the, how did you say, in the context?
Go ahead.
In the context of
Yes, City Clerk.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting a request from the audience. They're having difficulty hearing everyone's comments. If we could speak closer into the mic, thank you.
Thank you.
Just in the context of these districts as opposed to future districts, the only way of remedying your concern really is general fund subsidy. I mean, you're not, you don't have the ability to go back and completely reorganize the district. The district pays for improvements, and you decide what improvement's gonna pay for on an annual basis. But ultimately, it's a council decision. At some point, the council's gonna have to decide, either we're gonna subsidize or we're gonna cut back, one of the two. But a decision's gonna have to be made.
Robin, or, I'm sorry, Ted, go. I'm sorry, Ted. Couldn't see under the cowboy hat.
Okay. So, a lot of reading on this, it's a very new subject to me. I guess my first statement would kind of be, and it's not super professional, but what a mess, kind of. It's turned out to be, just in my general reading, I'm concerned about constantly running out of deficit or moving money from one spot to another. It's just not physically responsible. And to kind of play off of what Councilman Hoffman had said, who shared with me the Streets, Highways Code, and Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, so I had some light reading yesterday as well. There's a section here, and it talks about "Public property owned by any public agency and in use for the performance of public functions shall not be subject to assessment unless the resolution of intention expressly provides that it shall be addressed." So it says right here that we have the power to
Yeah, notwithstanding that Prop 218 changed those rules.
Well, right. But if we have hearing
We don't have the ability to assess public property.
Right. But there's, there's ways to get stuff done, I guess, again, with the Prop 218 hearings and those kind of things. And I think it just plays off the fact if there's city benefit, city property, or right of ways, that we should look at kind of offloading some of that burden.
Maybe just as a threshold understanding, that all the property which is subject to any light landscaping, lighting district in California, has to be public property.
Okay.
That's the only thing, you can't maintain private property.
So then, would this not allow for us
No, the purpose
To have a resolution?
The purpose of that section is the school district as fronts on, and is a part of, I mean, not in the city, but in other cities. Sorry, you might have a school within one of the
LMDs.
LMDs. At the time, in 1972, that this was drafted, you were able to assess the school district their costs
Okay.
If you made some findings. Unfortunately, as a result of case out of San Marcos combined with Prop 218, you can't, we don't have legal ability to do that.
Okay, so then I'm gonna ask another question.
But anyway, it pertains to other public agencies, not
So, everybody else is public, but not the city?
Yeah, the city, the city isn't a public agency with the purpose of that section.
Okay. So then my next question would be
But otherwise, the city can contribute anything they want to, to the districts.
Without any hearings or resolutions, or
Well, ultimately
How does that work?
Ultimately, it gets done in this annual levy hearing. But, yeah, I mean, you can, as a part of the hearing, let's see, the initial exposure to this annually is the draft engineers report. If based upon that, the city says, or on anything else, we want to contribute $10,000 or $100,000 per district, you can do that. I mean, it's public purpose, it's public property, it's being maintained.
Okay, so then my next question would go to
And Robin, that would actually occur in Part D of the assessment districts, the way this is set up, is where that contribution will be plugged into.
Okay. And then there was some discussion of surplus and deficit that I'll, being carried around, but I think that's gonna apply to the next one. I'm not able to, oh. Another section, and this may not be popular, but I'm just throwing it out there. If something is broken and it can't be fixed, I just don't understand why we kind of drag things out, or maybe have a tendency to. There is some discussion in this particular document about dissolution of things that aren't working. So, what's the legal ramifications of that? Or how
Well, I mean, the process is pretty straightforward. If the council wanted to do it, you can dissolve the district, the assessments end, and the city assumes all responsibility for the maintenance.
Okay. So, I'm not saying I want to do that, but
That's the answer.
Because that's, again, more money out of our pocket, obviously, but I just, I don't know if this is the normal timeline of how this all works. I just feel with some of the issues that are going on in some of the districts, that we need to be looking at options, and our timeline has not allowed for options to be talked about other than our next agenda item. And I just feel like there needs to be more time and some other options, so that we're not just kind of rolling the ball down the hill on some of this stuff, so.
Andy? If I could add something to this discussion, if it was the intent of the city council to consider paying a portion of the assessment or contributing funds to each of these LMDs, the time to have had that discussion would have been through the budget process. Unfortunately, we've gone through that process. Certainly, the city council can make adjustments to the budget at any time they wish to do so. Like everything else, it's a matter of budget priority. I could point to many, many items where the city is short funding. And, again, I, just speaking for myself, this type of discussion and the proposals will be, should have to be looked at from a big picture perspective in terms of what impact it has on the city as a whole. What does the city, what would the city need to give up in order to make this sort of proposals work? It requires a lot of thought. I don't think it's a discussion that should be had on the fly.
Right. Can I ask one other question? I'm not sure who's gonna answer this. Obviously, I live in Old Town and there's not LMDs. What was the intention of creating these LMDs? Was it to have the developers put in a bunch of money? Was it to say, you know what, we want, as we're building out Norco, we want it to be pretty, so we're gonna make sure it's pretty because we're gonna make these maintenance districts? Or when these were, what was the original intent? And why did these come to be in Norco where they didn't previously exist?
I think that it was a function of the development. The developer proposed a variety of improvements in infrastructure and, you know, additional public amenities, and proposed that some of it be paid for in exchange by a street lighting landscaping district. As I said, they were fairly popular, particularly in, when development was occurring rapidly in Riverside County in California. They're almost non-existent now. But it was, it was a function of negotiation with the developer. The city didn't impose the LMDs, but it was a way for the developer to, you know, balance his costs and hopefully provide benefit to the city at the same time.
If I can add to you, back in that, during that time, when these developments were coming in, the developer had a high expectation, wanted trails maintained at a certain level, not the same way they would be maintained elsewhere in the city. And also in addition to that, the city was not in a financial situation that they were gonna be able to maintain large covered cut slopes and those type of things, so developer So developer decided, I'm going to put those into assessment districts.
And realistically, and it's pretty obvious to everybody here, but the rule that, I mean, I've said a few times, is that the developer pays for nothing, residents pay for it. And ultimately, that's what happens, but it was a way of having the infrastructure built and the houses built. Some wasn't so popular, some-
No, I fought like hell against it, and I was right. Truthfully, the houses wouldn't have been built because, had this not happened. The deal was, it would not affect the general fund to, they would take care of a certain amount of things, and then when the dust settled, they were taking care of a lot less things than they were supposed to. And the bad thing is, is every single city is doing this right now as a way to get developments built. They don't call them LMDs, but they call them other things. And the tragedy is, is that it separates your city. And for me, right now, we don't have the money, but it would be, there's a part of me that would really like the hillside development to be part of our community, but as long as they're paying these huge taxes, it's very difficult for them. But at the same time, the whole intent was so that it would not affect the general fund. The developer said, I'll take care of it, we'll shovel it down the residents' throat in the hills, and you won't have to pay a dime. Of course, they forgot to talk about police, fire, and the reality is, is that, and I was here for the whole thing, I think Greg, you were here for the whole thing. In fact, Greg and I used to stand at the old podium and say, what the hell are you people doing? And this, it's just, it's a sad situation because usually they go broke after about five years. And so, I, it's a problem we're going to have to deal with because Norco as a whole, I think we need to unify. And I think that the newer residents that have come in, I mean, that development went through the second worst calamity and economic calamity in the history of the United States, and it survived, and it looks good. And somehow, I think Ted brings up a good point, that these are things that we enjoy, their entrances into the city, I think those are all very good points, and I think at some point, we're going to have to look at the whole. But, make no mistake, that was so that the general fund would not be impacted by the costs of that development. There's some, there are some cities where they're doing, I mean, they pay for like everything. And so, that's kind of how, and it was, it was intriguing, there was a small group of us, Greg Wright, that we said, you know, this is insane because look at the taxes these people are going to pay. And I can remember one staffer saying, well, it's okay, they can just vote them out. And it's, it's a little bit more complicated than that, and it's, but I do believe in the next few years, we're going to have to unify our city if we're going to survive. You have 46,000 homes about ready to surround us, and we are a green spot in the middle of concrete. So, anyway, is there any more questions for staff? Okay, do we have any?
You can open the public hearing.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody, I wanted to know if anybody-
Yes, I have one card.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing.
Rosa, Zanika Green.
No, this is one, two, three, five.
You just want to speak on four? Okay.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council. Does council have any comments, questions?
Just maybe some insight for Robin on that. Kevin was saying, when you look at that LMDs and, and these developments, John mentioned it, developers don't pay for anything, okay? They're always using someone else's money. But part of that is also the CFDs, all the community facilities districts that are into that mix. That, you would also need to research that. But, I think we kind of saw this, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, like with LMD two. Any member, any LMD, they can certainly vote to dissolve that LMD, but you have to remember, once you dissolve that, you get to enjoy the same benefits of maintenance that you and I have, say, living in Old Town and the rest of us. So, if you're happy with that level of service, have at it. But, something to throw into the mix there.
Yeah, Ted.
Yeah, I'm going to, a simple layman's term, it's just like on the Y LMDs, and that's exactly what Kevin said. They don't, residents, they just pass the buck, just like the CFDs, you know, the people, for those that don't know, the people up in Norco Ridge Ranch have their CFDs, it's about $4,500 a year, plus you got your LMD fees, depending on where you live, so, plus your property taxes. So, that's a perfect example, is developers don't pay for anything, they stack it onto the residents for 30 years, or however it is. But I still would like to see, and I don't know if I can do it at this point, just to research that for next year, and I didn't want to do it now, I just, and like Andy said, I would like to see what the cost would be for the following year's budget in doing that, to see, especially those areas where we have the whole city benefits, and you guys know better than I do where that is, those streets and trails, just because these are going to falter, they're going to max out, and we're going to end up being a burden no matter how we look at it. So, I'm just, if it just takes me sitting up here and asking you guys to look at that, or if it takes a vote, and then definitely look through your budgets to see what we can do, because it's going to get worse before it gets better.
With the passing of this, we can footnote this as part of our budget discussion going into the next year's budget, and then part of that could be identified as what would those costs be to take those particular areas that you had mentioned, and what would that cost be to the general fund?
I'm fine with that, and I see Andy's writing his notes down, so it will be done. He says, because we, we got to fix this, but I'm, thank you. Come here.
Anything else, Robin? Any, do I hear a motion?
Just one last question for the clerk. Have there been any written protests received?
Not for these LMDs, not for these districts.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the resolutions for the LMDs, one, two, three, and five.
Second.
Councilmember Skud Meyer, Hoffman-
Yes.
Mayor Portem Newton-
Yes.
Mayor Bash-
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have to do all three? It's, it doesn't, it's happened to separate, right? We're good.
Your motion was for-
Okay, that's what I thought. Mr. Mayor, just for seven B, I will have to reclusive myself on this since I am a resident of LMD four. It's kind of sad that all these years sitting back here, I've, I've got my chance to speak about LMD I live in, and the attorney says I can't, so.
Moving on to five B, Planning Director.
I'm, I sit here for several weeks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
More than happy to have Steve give this report.
All right, no, 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 my fault, my fault, I'm sorry. I meant seven B, Public Carrying Order in the Continuation of Landscape Maintenance District and Confirming a Diagram Number Four.
Well, this is the fun one tonight. LMD four is Norco Ridge Ranch, and I know we've talked about it a number of times. What has happened, this, well, let's go through the budget. The budget that we have here is $470,000 plus some change, of which maintains the landscaping and the trails, very similar to what it has done in the past years. There are some water savings in that budget. That budget also includes a $75,000 that we've, we've kind of committed to put aside within that district to have trail fence replacement, and that's the white vinyl fence that we had, the big project this past year, which we put down, ooh, 14,000 plus lineal feet of white vinyl fencing, and that was accumulation of about three years' worth of funding. Out of that project, there's still $52,000 left that's earmarked for trail fence replacement that's identified in the report. It's under the surplus side of the budgets. But what's happened this past year is, there was an audit done by city staff on electricity, and at that point, they found out that there was a meter for a booster pump for a water, the water reservoir that was being charged to this district. That meter should not have been charged to the district, it should have been charged to the water fund. They went back in the history, all the way back for, I think it was eight years, that they found out that there was charges to this district, that was eventually assessed to the, and levied against the properties of about $440,000 plus of electrical charges. What we've done on this budget is trying to figure out what to do with that dollar amount that should not have gone to the district, that should have gone to the water fund to pay for the booster pumps for the big reservoirs. Staff developed three options, that's, it's in your staff report, okay? Option number one is reduce the assessment by the equivalent amount of what the overcharge was this first year. Basically, what that does, it takes the assessment from what would be under the current budget of $861, down to $41.52. That's, that's an option of basically what you're doing is giving that overcharge back to each property owner in the district that paid into the, excuse me, each parcel that paid into the district. Remember, the Mount Shasta area never, that was 25, 26 homes, never paid into that Edison. In fact, they were never charged anything until about three years ago, when they were complaining about the trail maintenance, we realized they'd been zero since day one. And that's when we put in a charge, they only to pay for the trail maintenance, the fence maintenance, no landscaping, because remember, the Mount Shasta area is totally separated from the rest of Norco Ridge Ranch. There's, you got the Ingalls Park in between, you got Pike's Peak Park, the, going back to what we were discussing on the last districts, there is no benefit to them from the landscape maintenance that's occurring in the majority of the area, i.e., there is no electrical charges again to the Mount Shasta area. So in the discussion on these options, the Mount Shasta area is basically out of the Option two was formulated, okay, let's give the money back in phases. In other words, let's give half of it back now, which is about $220,000, and then over the next few years, give them back $75,000 a year until we've expended and given back the whole 440,000. Was there anything magical about picking that number of 75,000, only that it matched the amount of money that was going into trail fence replacement? You know, it could have been 50,000, it could have been 100,000, another number, but we just, staff came up with just the logic, give half back now, and use the 75,000 for, as it matched the trail fence replacement fund that's being set up that we established about three years ago. Option three, that was being proposed by staff, was basically, let's just give it back at $75,000 a year over, I think it's a six-year period, with the last year, it's less than 75,000 to make up the difference. Again, nothing magical about that one, it's just that it seemed logical that, okay, let's pick the 75,000 because it matched something in the line item of the main budget. I'm going to skip option four, and we're going to come back to that one, and move on to option five. Option five is basically, was proposed at a public meeting that we had, of which we had a couple residents that were in favor of that or suggested this, is basically, let the district retain the money, put it into a capital project, and let's start replacing to the tune of 440,000 plus the 52,000 that we had left over, plus the next 75,000, and let's do as much as fencing replacement as we can this next year. And so basically, if that went down that path, most of the 64,000 lineal feet of fencing that's in that district would have been replaced this next year. Yeah, or you can do it in two, two years. We could have kept just about down to only about 75,000 or 60,000, I don't remember whether I got the report, exact number of what would be needed in three years from now to replace, and then we'll have all 64,000 lineal feet of fence changed. That was, again, like I said, was brought up in the meeting. Then, option four, which is basically the option of, I want the money in a check form or cash form mailed back to me right now, today, and go on and keep the budget at the $861 in place, and give me my money now in cash. For that option, comments on that, I'm going to turn it over to either Andy or John, and they're going to comment on that option.
Okay, just as, there are a couple prefatory comments. One, the, by statute, the money has to go back to the district. I mean, yeah. Yeah, is that any better? That, this isn't city general fund money, it's money which is earmarked statutorily to be used by the district and the district only. The city council administers the district, but the city council is not the district and doesn't control anything other than the selection of improvements and how the money ultimately gets spent and the assessments, which is why we're here tonight. The first question, I guess that with this alternative, they're really both logistical and legal questions, and unfortunately, they end up being questions that don't necessarily have any finite answer. First, can the district legally, directly return money? That option doesn't exist in the statute. The funds deposited in the district are to be retained and improvement fund within the district, and any surplus is carried over, and you take into account when you establish the assessment for the following year. So there isn't any provision in the statute for the city council on behalf of the district to write checks back to anybody in particular. That said, there's also no specific prohibition of doing that. So, for the sake of discussion, let's say it was theoretically possible. The initial question is, who's entitled to it? There's, obviously, there's no answer in the statute, because the statute doesn't contemplate this kind of thing happening. There aren't any real good analogies either, although probably looking at how property taxes treated is the closest. It's not a completely analogous, partly because, I mean, there's no IRS people in there, are there? The assessment, even though I expect that most folks take a look at their total property tax bill and deduct the bottom line, the assessment portion is not a tax, and the IRS does not consider that to be deductible. The IRS rarely challenges it, rarely raises the issue, but in fact, that's the law. Again, it's, it's an ongoing discussion, accident, to digress a little bit. That same discussion is now ongoing in the federal legislature concerning, basically, community facilities districts, melloruse districts, which are in fact taxes, but build public property, and the IRS is trying to contend that, well, they're not really taxes, they're, they're bonds to build streets and highways, and so they shouldn't be deductible either. But they are as we speak. So, so again, using the, but using a property tax analogy, if property tax was overpaid, the amount which would be returned would be returned to the entity that paid it. It wouldn't go to the current property owner. That I think is pretty easy to figure out, the difficulty in determining in this case who that might be, particularly given the economy, the number of foreclosures, number of short sales, number of deals that may have contemplated that type of exchange, things that we just would, would never be able to find out. It would just be, like I said, incredibly difficult to determine who was entitled legally. At that point, we also would be required to provide a 1099 to those that we return the money to. The IRS would require it, I mean, the city doesn't care, but the IRS would, would require it, in part for the same reasons that we just discussed related to the payment and deduction of the total property tax bill. The city isn't making a decision, nor is it giving you anybody advice that any money that we receive that way is taxable, but nonetheless, it would have to be reported. It's kind of like when you get an income tax refund, you get, the IRS's equivalent of a 1099 which tells you, okay, you get it back, but it's taxable income. Again, I, I don't know where we go with this, I, I'm not, I'm not the city council, so I'm not making recommendations one way- I'm not, I'm not the city council, so I'm not making recommendations one way or the other, but it seems like the legal difficulties, notwithstanding logistical ones, probably make this something which was, not can't do, but would be very difficult to do, and may raise issues and legal issues particularly that probably aren't in anybody's best interest to raise.
If I could add to that, and so with the complexities and the legal difficulties that are presented under this option number four, I think we, the city council should also consider another option, which we would describe as option number six. And this option number six would deal with the issue as two separate items. The first issue is the return of the overcharges to the district, and that fund will be returned to the district, and the impact of returning that fund to the district will be to increase the reserves, the available reserve in the district. And then, the next issue is the assessment for fiscal year 2016, 2017. And that option would require the assessment to be made at the recommended amount, which would be $861.59. In the code, the provision in the code talks about how reserves in the district would be used. One of the ways to use that reserve would be to apply it to future assessments. That means it would reduce future assessments. The second option would be to use those reserves to fund capital improvements. In this case, will be used to fund the replacement of trails in the district over time. So that is another option that the city council might want to consider in view of the difficulties, the complexities, and the legal issues that are presented on the option number, on the option number four.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna make one other comment that I don't think was made, just so there's clear, that there was a request made to continue this. The reason that there isn't a recommendation to continue it is because of the short timeline that the assessment role has to get to the county. It's just, I mean, it's just too close. But Andy's proposal functionally continues it, because the money is expended, and the option, all the options are still available.
So my question is essentially, if you turn the money over to the LMD, over the next year, they determine, them along with the, with Dominic, engineer, they essentially determine what they're going to do with the money, and then, I mean, they come back to council. But my point is, is that it gives them a great deal of choice, correct? Greg, do you have anything?
Yeah, before the cards, and I guess what, since this came up, it's that, you know, I keep reviewing the options, what's the right thing to do? Now, what you brought up with this new option, option six, that lump sum returned back to the LM, LMD four's reserve account, a lump sum payment. Okay, follow that. Then, would the residents of LMD four have the opportunity to have a public meeting and discuss amongst those property owners what they would like to do with that reserve? Whether it be other items, say, okay, trail replacement, or plant more trees, or take out trees, or any other thing that would benefit that district? Is that opportunity available?
The literal legal answer is that ultimately, the council makes all those decisions, but given how the council has approached this and other districts, yes, I mean, every, every option for the expenditure of that money remains on the table as long as the money isn't spent.
To clarify, Councilman Newton, in spring, we conduct an LMD review of the engineer's draft report and the budget, and those type of discussions happen. So that would be the appropriate time, as we're working on budget, to conduct that same meeting with the residents of District Four.
And all present property owners?
We sent an invitation out to all. I can guarantee you, all 537 residents of those homes that would be representative will be there, but we do invite them all.
Okay, well, can I, let me sidebar on that, on your invitation. Could we start to look at, like, when we notice, like, in the mail and things like that, when you send an invitation then, would you make it an invitation and not just like something that says, "Attention, postal customer," that ends up in the junk mail?
Yeah.
That would make it look like, well, this is something I should read.
We most certainly could do that.
Okay. Just a couple other quick questions. One, basically on the process of this item, it's somewhat twofold to me. One, we have the CPI increase, and then, then we have a choice of options after we have the public hearing. I'll go back to my question on the other item, do we have any protests on the CPI increase?
And it's really all one issue.
It is?
Yeah. Because it will, I mean, if, for example, you chose to refund some portion this year as a part of, which is one of the options as a part of the assessment, then the engineer's report would be reflected to lower the assessment, that that wouldn't be the assessment's levy.
Let me comment in addition on that. We apply the 1.7% or whatever the CPI is per year to the assessment as the assessment. We levy something possibly different that is less. In this particular one, we assess and raise the assessment by the percent which we need to approve, which moves the assessment up to $995.24. That's the max we can assess. But the budget only needs $861.59 plus the Mount Shasta people in order to balance the budget. So the assessed, the levy is reduced down to 861. But yes, your action would still apply and put the CPI index onto the maximum assessment that would be allowed in the zone, a district. If we don't do that, we'll never catch up if, if, if we have a problem up there and need to spend more money for landscaping or water. So yes, your motion applies the CPI to the maximum assessment, but we're levying something different. In all cases, on all the options, one through six, it's less than the max.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't like two separate actions.
It's the same action.
Okay, so then my question will stand, Cheryl, were there any protests just received on the CPI only?
The comments, public comments provided in written form are before you, and those relate to the options presented in the staff report.
Thank you. Last question on option number four, on the processing of individual checks to the property owners at that time, okay? And John, you spoke of the difficulty, whether, you know, there were foreclosures, are banks involved, short sales, et cetera, et cetera. That process would then be, you would be doing that noticing, and, you know, like, well, I know I do, I don't know if any of you all do, like, in the newspaper, when they print that list of all these thousands of names and show amounts due, and I'm always looking to hopefully see my name? Is, is that, is that somewhat of that process? If you can't find someone for, let's say, three years, all right? I mean, you'd have to, like, do that type of noticing, and?
Well, there's, I mean, there's no legal requirement to do any particular kind of noticing, but I would, we'd do whatever was reasonable to, in an attempt to find out who that property owner was at the time.
Well, let's say you couldn't, then that, that amount then would go back?
I don't think it'd be difficult.
To the district?
I don't think it'd be difficult to find, yes, but any money that doesn't go, goes to the district, but I don't think it'd be difficult to find who the property owner was at any particular date. I mean, it'd be expensive, but, but not difficult, because that, just look at the title reports. That part would probably be pretty easy. Finding people, that's another subject.
Right, and so you, you don't find that person after X amount of time, that, that amount would then revert back to the LMD reserve account?
You make some decision about how you're gonna go about doing that. I don't know that the, I mean, it's like money that's achieved to the state. I mean, the achieve rules don't really apply to this circumstance, but the state basically says, you have seven years to pick it up, and if you don't, it's ours. So that's what, and so the hours in this case would be the improvement fund for the district.
Curious on that process, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. I'm concerned about the input from the members of LMD four and how it was collected, I think, prior to what we received this evening. Out of five, I took off Mount Shasta, and so it was 537 homes. We had 11 property owners, which is a return response of 1.9%. If we, or, sorry, it was 1.9% if I left in Shasta. If we took out Shasta, it was 2%. To me, that's not acceptable input to make a decision. I think there's a lot of factors that play into that. I think part of it is the noticing. I live next to a shopping center, so I get noticed when ABC and some of those things changed, and they're very plain, black and white, and can very easily be tossed in with the junk mail, but I know now to look for them, so I know what my neighbors are doing. So I think there's that, and I think, I don't know what the rules are as far as noticing people, but in this age of technology and access to technology, I'm not so sure that we couldn't look at doing a Google survey that we email to those 537 residents, that it takes them literally two to three minutes to click a couple buttons on a survey and get some feedback, instead of asking people to come on one certain night. I mean, we know, sitting up here, how hard it is to coordinate five schedules, let alone trying to coordinate 537. And I just think with our resources available, that we can find better ways to collect information from our residents and get some feedback from them. So regardless of how this particular thing turns out, we need to start making a better effort to get feedback from our residents. It could go back to the issue of transparency and all those types of things, and one of the things I talked about during my campaign is we need to be effectively communicating with our residents, and there's apps coming and all those things, and we're working on it, but I think this is an area where we're really deficient, and a 1.9 and a 2% return rate screams that to me, that we are incredibly deficient. I have a hard time believing that these residents don't care. I have a hard time believing that they're like, yeah, I wanna pay an extra $900 a year. I just don't believe that that's the case with this issue, and so we need to work on that. Now, we did have some more come in today via email from Cheryl, so that took us up to 22, so we're at 3.9% as walking in at 7 o'clock tonight, but still definitely not acceptable, in my opinion, on that. I love Greg's idea, like, we should make it look like a reinvitation or something, so it catches their attention. Brian's like, oh, great. So, but I do think we need to do something so it doesn't look like junk mail going to the residents. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm super torn on this, what the option should be, just because of the legal things, and, John, correct me if I'm right, but can I kind of in my mind think about these LMDs kind of as their own separate entities, not a corporation or anything, but what they generate belongs to them, what they, you know, expend and all that stuff belongs to them, so it's like this thing that is created in and of itself? Correct?
Yeah, what they generate has to be spent within the district boundaries and for the public improvements that are listed in the engineer's report.
So I'm gonna listen to the cards. You know, most of the input we got this evening from Cheryl was for option four, and I have my little chart here listing those, but I wanna listen to public comments, see, you know, what folks have to say. And I would definitely recommend that we look into Google surveys or different things to look at getting information from our residents, and do those, you know, I'm part of an organization with 850 members, I know how hard it is to collect information, but I know we've had a lot of success with Google surveys, and the less amount of time we can have people just give their input, the more likely they are to, to provide that for us. So that's all I have at this time.
So just so I'm clear, six, if we were to go with this new item six, what would happen is, is that residents would have a year, and they would be able to choose if they wanted to give themselves a reimbursement, come before council, or they could put solar on their electric meters, they could do whatever they want to help improve their?
As long as it was on public property.
No, I mean, I'm talking about their LMDs, that's what the discussion's about, and so they would, they would have the opportunity that they could come together and they could actually choose what they wanted to do with the money, and then bring it before council, and then?
Essentially, as I think.
And would give them time.
Essentially, all the, I mean, all the options, including options which aren't listed, are on the table.
In other words, if you were to do six?
Yeah.
Okay, that was just my question. So, any other comments, questions?
I have a question, if we do option six, what would be the minimum input that would be satisfactory to this council to make a decision for all 500 and some residents up there? I'm just asking, because that's my big hangup at this point in time. How would that be conducted? Sorry.
You know, the old story, it's who shows up to the horse race? Or like an election, it's the percentage of who decides to participate, I would think, Robin.
And notwithstanding, I mean, what Brian said is what the process has been, generally a discussion in the spring, but there's nothing which would preclude the council from saying, you know, let's start a month and a half from now, and have tried what we can to communicate, and maybe it's flyers in mailboxes, or, and I know that others have done that.
On those meetings, are they just noticed with the?
Through a letter.
Through a letter, and then, is it set for one time, or do you have multiple options for meetings for them?
We, here's what we, the last time we did, we did two meetings, but we had the first meeting, and then we needed to provide information, we came back with the second meeting. So it really determines on how the first meeting goes, like, for example, LMD one, two, three, and five, there wasn't really a lot of participation, but there was really no real controversy or anything. And LMD four is where we had more conversation, actually, since we've been doing the meetings there once a year, LMD four is probably the best representative of all of the LMDs at those meetings. And so we do get input, and I can go back to this year's budget, or last year's budget we were in, they wanted to not increase the, go to the top of the levy, but to take that back so that the levy was actually reduced as it would have been. So we have, in those discussions, we said, look, we could do this, and they said, why not give us that money back, so we reduced the levy. So those are the conversations that go on at these meetings, including some of the improvements from trail fencing, which was a discussion a couple of years ago about putting money aside for that, and further back than that, when we had a discussion about doing drainage improvements. So all of those things are discussed during that time, but as John said, you know, we can start a process much sooner, and?
And one of the things, I mean, in terms of the people that participated in the meeting with Brian regarding this district, it was before this issue arose. I mean, it's hard to tell if the issues that we're discussing now had have been issues prior to the spring meeting, how many people would have shown up.
Okay, but so for clarification, there's one meeting in the spring?
Yes, unless we deem that there's another one needed for whatever, so.
All right, thanks.
Any other comments? I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any cards on this issue? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff. Robin, like you said, what a mess, huh? As you all were... As you're all aware, I supported option four, with the exclusion of residents paying any fees associated with the refund. The city made air, not the residents. A couple of concerns, how this was reported to the residents. When we met with the city manager in this meeting, it was represented that the current homeowner would be receiving this refund, and it was not going back to, it was going to be too difficult to try and find out who the previous owners were. At that time, this is when option four was created by residents, because they're like, "Okay, well, it's not that difficult. We're not tracking down all these people." It wasn't until we got the staff report that we identified that it was going back to the person that paid for these fees, which is probably the legal process of this. Also, during that meeting, it was also brought up to the LMD residents. We were led to believe in the last couple of years that the residents of LMD four owned the wood fencing that was being removed, and that went through the ad hoc committee, everything else. Councilman Hoffman was a member, was just a resident at that time, but he also made it a recommendation during the ad hoc committee to give the rebate to those residents, because we own that wood fencing, as we were told. At this time, now we're told that the city attorney has advised that that is a city asset now, and does not belong to the residents, and therefore, there won't be a rebate or anything like that to it. So that brought up the question, why are residents being charged to maintain a city asset and be assessed to replace a city asset? So at that point, I'd also like to go back to what Councilman Hoffman was bringing up about the other LMDs. They don't get assessed until they get a Prop 218 hearing to get their trail fencing replaced. If they don't agree to the assessment, their trail fencing doesn't get replaced. It will get replaced with old wood if they have the funding, but this could take years for them to agree to do that replacement. Option six, as it presented tonight, this is why we ask to continue this. This could be another option that could be viable, but that needs more input from the residents, not just what's considered here tonight. So that's why you received a letter from us asking for a continuation of this, to give this more time and more thought, because 11 residents were not enough, and most residents that we spoke to over the weekend, that you probably received letters from, were completely unaware of what was going on, so they didn't give you input. And thank you for bringing that up, so we can bring more awareness to that. Also, since we were talking about contributions, can we get a contribution to help pay for our CFDs? Think about it. Thanks.
Debbie Bucky.
How are you?
Hi, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Longtime resident, first-time speaker. I'm, of course, part of LMD four, and I'm here because I was at the meeting, and I both, with Lance this weekend, went out of our way to try and locate people. I think, believe Lance put a flyer on every single person's door in LMD four, and there were posters put up on all the mailboxes and telephone posts, and there was a lot of effort put into finding the residents. In reference to the staff report, it does state that option five was chosen by the residents. My best recollection of that meeting was is that we voted to include it as an option to you, not as the option we preferred. I think most everyone preferred number four. In option one through three, and now six, it's, to me, inherently unfair to the residents. It's just another way for the city to maintain the money longer and continue using it. You've had it for 10 years. I don't know where eight came from, because it was 10 at the meeting. So option one through three is really inherently unfair to the homeowner, because you're continuing to utilize the funds and maintain the funds, and you're not paying any interest on the funds. So that one is unfair. If you do use option one through three, you're looking at creating havoc to these homeowners and their escrow accounts for years. Their homeowner, their house payment will be reassessed on an annual, quarterly, or bi-quarterly basis, over and over again. So for years, their house payment is going to fluctuate, up, down, up, down, overages, shortages. It's a mess. In option number four, it should be the easiest, pay the residents. When you sell a property, you're selling the interest in that property, so I don't understand why we need to go back to all the other old people, because I bought the house, I sold my interest when I left the house. I no longer have an interest in that home. So I'd like to know where that part's coming from, that we are required to find all the individuals. And if we do have to find them, a simple title search would tell you who owned the house, should give you, since 1886, all the way to the current, your title search should tell you who owned the property. So, let's see, problem number five, sounds really good, but all of us have different goals. Some of us plan on staying for years and years and years, some of us plan on selling. So option five is to replace the fencing, which is really a good and beneficial thing, although if my house isn't getting replaced this year, I'm once again disadvantaged, and the option of now doing it for two years. Now, I'm waiting two more years to become whole with you, or if I sell, I've lost my advantage. So I think that we need to rethink everything. I think it needs to be put on hold. I don't like the idea of putting it back in the fund, now option six, because now we have to wait a whole other year before we get a refund, if we want one. And I agree with Brian, excuse me, with Lance, the asset belongs to us, not you. And you owe me some goods.
Okay. Thank you.
Jose Duran.
Good evening, members of council. I've resided in the city of Norco for the last 20 years. I currently live in the new areas of Norco Ridge. Attended the meeting, and I assumed that everybody there was informed of how they were going to present the information to the residents that were there. We were given the three options, the options of giving credit to us for taxes, because it's not a refund, it's just a credit. We then said, "No, we want an option four," because council's going to ultimately give the decision, so it's better off to have more options. So at the meeting, 14 people were at the meeting, 11 residents had interest in properties. We voted pretty much at a high volume at a hands' poll to get our money back, because we know that shenanigans do happen, there's a lot of interest that's going to come into play. Seeing how the city members that were there presenting these options should have been informed of what legal options were going to be the subject of, so they presented that the current homeowner will have the interest and the refund. It was brought up numerous times, Mr. Petrie, Mr. Rush, and also the city manager, all of them, at several given times, made it known that it would go to the current homeowner. That's all I got to say, and thank you for your...
Thank you, sir.
Antonio Beretto.
Hi, Tony.
Oh, Honorable Mayor and Council, I'd like to speak about some options about the future of the money, of which would be a benefit for lowering the overhead. So looking at the cost of electricity, we don't know what the cost is going to be in five years or 10 years, and obviously, it's going to be more. So looking at the cost of water, and if we could put in solar, or if we could use a reclaimed water, or use the money for good, in that sense, rather than, $800 really isn't going to change anyone's life, but us being together, it's a lot of money. And so I would like to see the option of it. Looking at the code, it seems pretty clear that it goes back to the, it rolls over and goes back into the fund, so I think that we could take the time to explore the options of having a reduced overhead in the future. So I want to thank you guys for this opportunity, and everybody should try to get along.
Thanks, Tony.
Tina Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
So I'm definitely of the opinion that it should be continued, and that we need to kind of take a breath and really figure out how to do this. I understand there's an issue with budget and whatever it is that needs to be submitted on a timeline, but I would have to think that there's a creative way to solve that problem with a lot less pain and risk than trying to figure out how to solve this financial mistake and how to make residents whole. It just feels a little bit risky to try to figure that out here. So I attended the meetings. I did recall, actually, in a previous city council meeting, there was a discussion around notice for a development, and I think, Robin, at that time, you did say, you know, "We need to get a little bit better at that." So I did ask, I asked a few different questions. One was if we could have a third meeting, because there aren't enough people here, and we need to get people engaged, so this doesn't blow up on us. I also asked if we could do some sort of petition that could outline the options that we could circulate, that the council would receive as an acceptable format, you know. I was just trying to use lead time that we had from that meeting between then and now to get more people engaged. The issue was that we really wouldn't have the verbiage and the facts behind what was being assembled, and able to, you know, to be able to turn that around in time for tonight. So we did the best we could with the 70, what is it, 72 hours? I think Lance did a lot of walking. So I just, so my thoughts are that I think that a citizens committee would be really great, like, if we can get a group of LMD four residents together and just start fresh with some options and look at, I don't think there's a lot of great examples of how things like this have been solved in the past, right? So it's not there. I think some of the things are probably a little bit more of an exposure to us if we go down those paths. I think trail fencing is great, except for there's a little bit of confusion now on the subject of who owns the fencing, and why are we paying for it if we don't? So I just feel like we should re-baseline. Let's just take a deep breath, time out, and come back to it. And again, you know, can we find a way to solve the budget issue in a more safe manner than trying to figure this out on the fly? So, thank you.
Rosa Zaniga-Green.
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. First of all, I don't know much about the LMD Act of 1972. I am informed that it does allow for error, for error in any overage found, either goes back to the LMD, or it goes directly to the current homeowner of the property. So that's what I'm informed of. I would need to have more conversation with you, or, you know, investigate that a little bit further. So I'm just concerned that this is going to take a whole bunch more time. And in regards to the comment that was made, that the residents bought into it, I would just like to publicly inform the council that, the council that was in charge at that time also bought into it. They wanted this development. So hello, team? We bought into it. What we bought into was the community facilities district, which we, as the residents in LMD four, paid $4,500 to $5,000 a year in taxes, and that's to cover the infrastructure, the streets. It covers the arena that not only we enjoy out there. I just had a mini horse show out there that I was in. Every other resident in this town enjoys it, and there's other people that have come out from other areas that enjoy that, and I helped pay for that, and so do the residents of LMD four. It also includes the fire station on Sixth Street. The fire station isn't going to be limited to just going to LMD four. They're going to go cover the rest of Norco, if required. The reclaimed water, I believe that's also part of it, that's in there as well. The LMD, the landscape maintenance district, about $800, as we've been discussing, that covers the trail, the trail fencing, the trails, the landscaping. You know, I just want to let you know that this is what we out there pay, and there's other people in the community that definitely benefit from it. In regards to the meetings, I was a supporter of option five at that meeting. I've never believed in giving back the money, because we're going to end up being in the same position like these other districts are, somewhere down in the future. So if you keep the money in the fund, in the LMD, you have that, you add to the reserves that you will need for the future. Andy, thank you. Option six sounds like a great idea as well. So, you know, right now, I'm leaning towards option six, because we do need to continue this decision on what we need to do. You need to get your report out to the county, so that we can go ahead and have a clear understanding what will be assessed, but what we'll do with the balance or the reserves, we need to go ahead and continue then. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosa.
Don Bauger.
Hi, everybody. We moved here in 2005, and we moved up into Norco Ridge Ranch, and we're fully aware of the LMDs and the CFDs, and as the developer explained to us, it was to keep it looking the way it was developed. So we were happy to do that. We're actually some of the early inaugural members of this yearly meeting to review the engineer's report. We were kind of the only ones there, but we have always advocated for improvements in the district, as replacing street trees, putting in the drains to prevent the erosion, having it go over to Valley Crest, so that when it rained, it would be put back the way it was supposed to. And I can say, in the nine years that we were up there, the district improved. The money should stay in the district. I don't want it back, but now I'm fearing that we have entitlement to it, so that's good. We have, if you need it, if you go with option four, we have all of our tax bills, so we can tell you how much we've paid, so we've got them all. It's really complicated up in Norco Ridge Ranch, because people don't even know what they're paying for. The CFD versus the LMD, versus their taxes, versus all the other things that go on up there. So I think option five is the way it should go. Don't reduce any future assessments, put it back into the capital improvement program. I think not just the trail fencing, but Dominic can tell you, we didn't finish all the drains, so I'd like to see more drains put in. There's still areas that get eroded. I think it should go to trail fencing, additional drains, and now that we've moved down to the flatlands, don't eliminate any of the LMDs. That is a bad idea. The city cannot afford to maintain all the LMD areas. You may be paying a little bit extra in those other districts, but you'd be paying a lot if you had no LMD money. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Don.
Carrie Bow.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi. Hi, council members, and Mayor, I just want to say I'm in for proposal number four. That's, in my opinion, I think is the best way in which to go about this. This is something that was a simple mistake. It's, you know, I feel bad, because there is a lot of time and money that's going to be put on your guys' hands in order to make this work that way, but it all, it came out of our pockets, and like was brought up earlier, who knows if some of these residents are going to be here for another six months, another six years, or what, and you want to make sure that you give them the money back that they put out there, so that way they don't lose out on that money, or they don't get to actually enjoy the money that it's going towards if we decide to give it to fencing or something of that nature. So I wanted to bring up that. I did, what Lance brought up, which was perfect in regards to the fencing, that's been a concern of mine forever also, do we own or rent the fencing, or, you know, how is that all set up in regards to fencing? Because I was really confused in regards to that. So it'd be nice to really kind of understand what some of this RLD really is paying for, what is ours, what is not ours, you know, that type of thing. And then what Ms. Gronmeyer brought up, I thought was fantastic, which is using Google or any other, you know, electronic device in which we can, see you guys, and send a letter out, and we can just go straight to our computers, finish a survey real quick, and then you guys will get a much higher percentage than what you currently gain. I never got, I'm sure I got the letter, but it went probably straight in the trash, so just kind of bringing that up also. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Marisela Delgado.
Good evening. I am here today because of Lance's efforts to go out to our district and put those letters. I count for two. I count for two. I own two houses off and on Half Linger. So I'm in favor of a continuance because I need to educate myself more other than just what I read on that letter. And I'm leaning towards option four, and I believe that it should be given back to whoever is the current owner of the parcel. Because like the other woman said earlier today, when you sell, you sell your interest in that property. And so I have bought two properties there. I now own the interest in two properties there, and I would like to see that money come back. Or however our residents decide, you know what I mean? What is the best option? But currently, I don't know enough about it, but I just feel like I'm with Lance.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is my first time here.
Welcome.
And I thank you for the opportunity. I also want to thank my neighbors who went out this past weekend and put flyers in the doors. Had they not done so, I wouldn't be here tonight, and I'm sure there's many others that maybe didn't even see the flyer in the door, just tossed it. I just feel that if one of us went to a store and we got overcharged for something and we were made aware of it, that we wouldn't want to have that money refunded to us. Well, that's what we've got here. We've been paying extra money, and we didn't need to pay that extra money. As far as waiting for another year, another meeting, another two years, the time value of money means that every year, this money that's being held, that we pay that we shouldn't have, has less purchasing power. And therefore, you can't buy as many trees with it, you can't buy more fencing with it as much as you could. I live on Crossrail Lane. I like that name. I really don't want to live on vinyl fence lane. I don't know why we're going to vinyl fencing. You touch that stuff, and it's so fragile. The kids that sit upon the hill at the golf course that we discussed earlier tonight, they make a mess out of the rail fencing. I can only imagine what's going to happen with that vinyl fencing. But back to the $800 we're overpaid, I think it's only fair that we get it back. Why should we have to pay for something that we didn't get? It's our money. Let us spend it now to where we can buy as much as we can with that $800. And if we have to pay more in the future with inflation, maybe we'll have a raise, and we'll have the money to pay the added cost in the future. But right now, I can use the $800 as I'm sure others could, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Closing public comments, bringing it back to council. Do we have any comments?
Certainly want to thank everybody for their comments tonight, the emails that we've received, a full day of phone calls that I'm sure all of us had, and appreciate the time and the input of all the residents. Trying to weigh this, that, with these different options, and how do you bring everybody together to find a common result is somewhat of the goal of that. For a few weeks, I've seriously leaned towards option four. That seemed to be very viable, and obviously, the cases were made for that. But looking into it, and it's like, how do we work as a group on this? And then what remedies are provided by law with the LMD Act that somewhat doesn't give us a real good direction? And then I keep going back to the, put it back into the reserve account, and then let the residents work with, you know, whether it's fencing or solar or different areas that would benefit the entire district. Now, what was brought up a couple of times, and that was on the fencing, which now makes me shy away from option number five on the trail fencing, that I'll disagree with John on considering it a city asset. I think the way, I think it's fair and reasonable to handle it. If you were going through changing out the vinyl fence, which I do support, and it does make your neighborhood look a lot better, stop and ask each homeowner, you know, do you want the trail fence, or do you want me to haul it off? I don't consider it an asset. If you were to drive over to Engels Park and see all that wood fencing stockpiled, this is a city liability, that there's no value to that. If you got 10 cents on the dollar, you'd be lucky. We're going to end up paying someone to haul it off. And so I consider it a liability. If Bill could pull one or two rails out of that whole pile, it's been a good day. So that's kind of how I feel on that fencing issue. Right now, I think the way I would lean is the newly proposed option six, that lump sum payment, no partial payments, lump sum payment back to LMD4's reserve account, proper noticing, and have the residents of LMD4 come together as their district and find a solution that would benefit all of them.
I'm going to concur with Greg. I am still not 100% clear on the fencing issue as well because I don't understand how that LMD is paying for it, but it's not theirs. It's not going to be picked up and put somewhere else in the city or... So I need some resolution and a better explanation on that as well. I like the idea of number six because it's going to allow for us to meet the August 10th deadline that needs to be met. It's going to allow for residents to come together and decide really what they want to do. And again, if we could just kind of open up our boxes a little bit and kind of think outside of the box, and I really like what Tony had to say about how can we look into the future and reduce our costs going forward, whether that's drought-tolerant landscaping or solar panels or whatever. I think there's a lot of creative ways where you can reduce overhead to make this LMD a little more viable, especially with what we just went through with the other LMDs. So I kind of envision in my head where the group gets together and says, oh my gosh, we've got this huge reserve, this windfall money. What are some out, you know, really exciting things that would be good for our LMD that we could do together as a group, where we pull our money and benefit all of us in this LMD? So I don't think that's something that's going to happen in one meeting. I don't think that that's something that's, you know, not even going to happen over a course of several meetings. So I think giving the time for Brian and his staff to conduct, you know, some research. Maybe the residents come to you and say, here are some options of what we want, and then there's got to be time for research. What are the expenses? What kind of contracts are available? What are the legal ramifications? And how do we go about getting these things done in our LMD? And then move forward from that. So I think it's a good compromise. And when I talk about a compromise, everybody's going to feel the pinch a little bit on both sides, all the parties involved, but I think the end result is going to be something that's going to benefit everybody. So I'm definitely leaning towards option six.
I just had a question. So I'm confused now. Does the money, will you have to, so for example, if you've owned a house four years, you'll get $300. Then the person before them, if they owned a house for six months, there's some houses that we know have been owned by 10 people. So each person, one gets $36.72? Or do we just pay the current owner? Which is it? We've been told two things.
I don't think that we have the ability to reimburse only the current owner, except on a go-forward basis, that is, by reducing assessments based upon the amount of money that's in the assessment district. But then the answer to the first half of your question is, I'll be looking to him to bring in his tax bills, but that's frankly what it would end up being. It's not simply a matter of doing a title report. It's a matter of doing the title search and then finding out what the assessment was as to each of those properties over that 10-year period. And then, yes, if it's 10 different owners, it's 10 different checks for 80 bucks.
And then the whole ownership of the fencing, my understanding, and Robin, you are absolutely correct. This was a mess, and truthfully, for the last 20 years, it's been like watching a slow train wreck. And it's one of the great boondoggles of all time. We will build this amazing place for you, and it won't cost you anything. But you can't afford the police, you can't afford the fire, you can't... And what happens is, they all go broke. And it's so frustrating. So what people don't understand is that you're paying for public property. You don't own the arena. You don't own the fence. And truthfully, I'm on your side. I mean, to me, just ethically, it's your fencing, but legally, it's public property. That's the boondoggle.
The parallel probably is the CFDs. The Community Facilities District pays for capital improvements only, public capital improvements, streets, gutters, all the things that the developer quote would have paid for, but would have also been attached on the cost of the house. I mean, again, developers don't pay for anything. So that if there's a $10,000 worth of lien on your property, the way CFDs were originally sold was that the $10,000 of capital infrastructure, streets, covers gutters, that each home was going to have to build, would have been added on to the house at the mortgage rate, and that it was less expensive for all concerned to issue bonds at a public agency tax exempt rate in order to build that facility. That it was still going to be paid for by the homeowner, but it was, rather than a part of the mortgage, it was going to be a subset of the mortgage because the homeowner was going to pay for it one way or the other. I mean, a $350,000 house, if there were $10,000 worth of improvements that need to be made, and it wasn't through the CFD, the house was going to be costing $360,000. Because again, developer isn't writing any checks. But that's the capital side. And with CFDs, it was capital expenditures, all the money was spent, the public improvements were built. That's over. With landscaping, maintenance districts, it ends up being a little bit different than that. It's a combination, potentially a combination, because I don't know how the developer paid for the actual improvements which were originally installed. But generally, what happens is that developer, oh, there are two ways of going, developer puts in all the trail, let's use trail fencing example, puts in all the trail fencing as a part of his construction loan. And the maintenance district is literally that. It maintains what has been installed. Sometimes, and I can't tell you for sure with these districts, but the LMD might have built the initial improvement, but then the money that's being paid now is to maintain it. But the way that both of those work under both CFDs and LMDs work under the law, it's limited to public property. So Kevin's exactly right. What the LMD paid for was ultimately public property. It's not something that the homeowners got together and said, let's buy and put up ourselves, but it's public property. If it wasn't public property, it couldn't be a part of the district. So that's why the conclusion is that the trail fencing is, I mean, it's just like any other public property, just like the Nellie Weaver.
Greg was probably there too, when the councilman sort of looked up and said, the residents are paying for the covered arena? It just keeps giving, and so...
Yeah, I mean, the covered arena is a good example.
Yeah, but we were told that it was going to be paid, but it's a perfect example. It's a public, but we thought the developer was paying for it. Find out it was saddled to the residents, which is difficult.
It was, he did pay for it.
He did pay for it?
Yeah, he did.
Well, yeah, I know, but eventually, he gave it back to the residents. Because I know the story, you're right. You know, the other part, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just to add to the fencing, just when we went out to replace the capital and do the capital improvement, replace the fencing, it was said, let's see if we can keep that fencing and use it within those other areas so I could do fill-in. The problem is, is that when we pulled that fencing, there is some good stuff, but there is a lot, a lot of bad stuff. And typically, we would just demo and get rid of that. But because of the direction at that time, and, you know, not knowing that until you pull it all out, we stored it there. But most of that is ready to be just tossed into the dumpster and got rid of it. It's not, I couldn't reuse it. So if Lance wants to bring his pickup up there and load it up, he can have it. But there is some stuff which I would use for filler within that district, but a lot of it is just nonusable.
My hope ultimately is that Norco, we, again, we have a pretty nice community, and it would be really, really like right now, we're, because of, and there's dozens of these in Eastvale, and they're all fighting all the time. And it's just, they're like little communities inside of little communities. And, you know, we are, again, a green belt in the middle of concrete, and I hope that somehow we resolve this. I too confer, I concur with my colleagues. I think that option six is the way to go, and I'm going to make a motion to accept that. I think that that gives us time. We meet the assessment date. It gives some continued time, so I will make that motion that we accept, that we approve option number six.
I do have discussion. Do you want to second first?
She seconded, so under discussion.
So just under discussion, just make a few comments and also to the audience, that there was no malice intended with this at all. This was a mistake. It was ongoing. Staff did realize it, and we are doing our very, very best to take fair, reasonable corrective action. One other thing that I wanted to mention, I had this discussion with a resident that called me today that is not involved in the coming to council meetings, but she wanted to know about all these different options, which somewhat, we've had this discussion on the CFDs and the LMDs and how internally it gets so convoluted that, and Brian, you know what I'm going to talk about, is there's some areas of LMD4 where your payment pays for maintenance of the parkway. There's other streets and areas where the homeowner maintains the parkway. And how now do you start dividing and credit and debit, all of that? That just compounds that entire mess. So, and I just wanted to throw that out, and Brian can explain that story to you later.
And I want to piggyback. I want to applaud staff because we have a new staff, and they found it. And I'm very proud of the fact that we immediately told people, we notified people, we became transparent. I mean, that is something that nobody noticed for a long, long time, and I'm very, very impressed, and I know exactly who did it, and I applaud them, and I, you know, you and I are on council because we saw, we just, we want to change, staff changes, and those changes, Andy's done an excellent job of bringing in quality people. And so I guess, are we ready for a vote?
What I think all your voting on the motion was simply to take, quote, option six, but you really do need to take action to approve the resolution.
Okay, so I make a motion to...
Well, you have a motion, so you can vote on the six option and then come back with the next motion.
So I rescind my motion, and in other words, I have to now go to the, because I...
Just go ahead and vote on your motion, because that memorializes that that's what you want to do.
Okay, all right.
And then you'll vote on the resolution.
Okay, so the motion is, motion by councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Bash, seconded by councilmember Grunmeyer to accept option six. Councilmember Grunmeyer, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now you need a motion to adopt resolution 2016-51.
And now I make a motion to adopt 2016-51.
Councilmember Grunmeyer, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll now take a 10-minute break. We'll now take a 10-minute break. So we'll bring the council meeting back to order, moving to 7C. Ordinance number 1005, first reading ordinance amending chapter 14.08, public sewerage system waste to Norco Municipal Code, code change 2016-03, public works director.
This is the first reading for the ordinance for adopted, for the new sewerage ordinance that RICRA recent adopted. RICRA Board, and part of the other item on today was to accept the adopted waste ordinance that the Regional Water Quality Control Board require us to update. It was about 10 years old, there was numerous things that have to be updated. And subsequently to that, part of that requirement that RICRA Board adopted, we actually have to make sure that our own city ordinance regarding waste discharges mirrors what RICRA adopted. So basically, this is, we've created a new ordinance that's going to replace in its entirety the existing ordinance, which is 14.08. And this is the first reading of that ordinance to adopt that, so we'll have a second reading when that point it would be adopted. So basically, our ordinance pretty much mirrors word for word what the RICRA ordinance does, and to make sure that we're in full compliance is exactly what RICRA expects us to do in monitoring and maintaining our city-related discharges.
Do we have any questions for Chad? Have any cards on this issue?
No cards.
Let me open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Any questions now, any comments? All right. Need a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve.
An ordinance of the City Council of City of Norco amending chapter 14.08, public sewerage system wastes to the Norco Municipal Code, code change 2016-03.
Councilmembers Gunnmeyer, Hoffman, Mayor Portem Newton, Mayor Bash.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 8A, appeal conditional use permit, 2015-32 Mavericks, planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an item that was appealed by the City Council. The Planning Commission reviewed this project. It's a proposed expansion of an existing bar, restaurant, that's located at the northeast corner of Hamner Avenue and Sixth Street, kind of off on a bend, on the bend on Old Hamner Road. The project that was presented to the Planning Commission was an expansion from their current 2,742 square foot building to add an additional 8,050 square feet for a total building square footage of 10,792 square feet. There were a number of issues that were brought up during project review. The applicant was informed that the project could not be recommended for approval, and they were offered the opportunity to seek a refund of their fees. They chose not to do that and asked that the project be taken to the Planning Commission. The project does involve three variance requests, one for setback requirement, one for landscape escaping requirement. Those were pretty minor and would not be hard to support. The third variance was for the required amount of parking. The expanded facility needs a total parking, total number of parking, 107 spaces, and they were providing 33 onsite. They had hoped to get a parking agreement with the American Legion across the street, and they did provide two form letters to the city, signed by the American Legion and by the owner of Mavericks, that they would share their parking. One of the, and that has not been reviewed by the city attorney yet for, to meet the intent of the code. One of the things that would be, that staff would require upon approval is that they would have to show that the proposed shared parking area would meet all of the city's parking There was some question about the ownership of the parking lot between the library and the American Legion facility, because the assessor parcel maps are, they're outdated, but it's the latest that we have, and they're very unclear and hard to read. So we actually, staff today did a title search to find out where the property line is, and what it has revealed, without digging further into the title report, is that the parking area, the American Legion doesn't own any of the parking area. So a parking agreement with them has no validity to the project itself. The Planning Commission did review this, and the primary issue was a lack of parking, and they did unanimously deny the project without prejudice, which means the applicant can redesign and approach the Planning Commission again within a year, where if it's just denied outright by the city code, you have to wait a year before you can come back and reapply. But the Planning Commission did deny without prejudice, and that decision was appealed by the City Council. And so it is before you tonight to give direction or make a decision. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Do we have any questions for Steve, council? Ted, do you want to go, Ted? Go ahead, Ted.
Well, initially, now you just brought something new to light to me because...
We just found out today.
Okay. And bear in mind, I mean, I thought the city owned half the lot and the Legion owned the other half, but now you're telling me the city owns the whole lot. So that sheds a whole new, different light in this. Is the applicant made aware of that today?
No.
Is this the first time you're hearing it, right, Rob? He's done everything here, and correct me if I'm wrong, based upon the idea that someone, the Legion owned that property. And you had no, until today, no knowledge of that.
Until today. Although we did inform the applicant that, and it's in your staff report, that even if, even if that entire lot were available for a shared parking agreement, it would not meet the parking requirement.
And I agree. I was going to that, to that point, is the Legion doesn't have their room now because even when they have a major event there, the people overflow all over. But this new revelation kind of throws a whole wrench into it, as far as I'm concerned. And if the applicant wasn't aware of it, and you're not aware of it until tonight, I don't know if legally, I mean, he brought letters that said that he wanted shared property, and maybe this, we shouldn't have been hearing this at all based upon the letters he has and the fact that, give him an opportunity to go back and not hear this, because he was basing on something totally different. Does that make sense? What I'm saying is, if you're just telling us now, he doesn't own, they didn't own it, and he was based upon the fact that they owned that property, this might throw a whole thing out. I don't want him to, to us deny something that he now thought he had. You know what I'm saying? Or approve it based upon the prior information in your staff report. And let me ask you one other question real quick. Is this the same plans that were in front of the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll leave that to John.
Council doesn't have the obligation, but you can certainly continue the hearing. I mean, I expect that Rob is somewhat stunned. So, I mean, there's no reason why you can't continue it for two weeks.
Yeah, Greg, please.
Couple items on this, that when this, when this appeal first came forward, I voted no on it. And that was based that this should have never left the Planning Commission. There's still work to be done at Planning Commission level. I don't believe it's anywhere near an appeal-type hearing point. The variances, and part of my reasoning on that is the minor work to be done on the architectural elements, to me, that should be worked out at the Planning Commission. It's just add a couple architectural features, and I think that is all the Architectural Review Board was asking, or the Planning Commission. I don't have much heartburn on the variance on the setback or on the variance on the landscaping. You know, maybe that needs to be intensified a little bit, but that is also an issue that can be worked out at Planning Commission level. But for a second, and I want to ask this question, and let's take away this new development of the parking lot. And the parking is the issue that needs to be resolved back at a Planning Commission level. If there was a shared parking agreement, would the applicant be responsible for updating that shared parking lot as far as like striping to the proper size stalls required by code? And what would be required as far as a path of travel from a shared parking access to a facility and impacts on handicap parking?
The, I'll answer it in three parts. I'll start with handicap parking. The handicap parking, you have to have a clear path of travel. There's nothing that restricts it from being across the street. But typically, the, in a situation like this, we probably would ask for all the handicap parking to be located up next to the building with the rest of the parking elsewhere. The applicant would be conditioned to provide improvements to the shared parking area to meet the city code requirements. And I guess it was two questions.
Yeah. Those type of thoughts, I just didn't know how to get those clear in my mind with it. The project, if there was a shared agreement, the project as it was presented to planning, it is still underparked. With the agreement out of the picture, it's severely underparked, and the parking's the entire issue. My feeling is that I don't see a basis for appeal. The applicant should be able to, you need to go back to the Planning Commission on this.
Robin?
If you choose to do, if you choose to do that...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you choose to do that, it's denying the appeal and directing it back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, opposing Planning Commission, right?
Okay, so, let me, if we uphold the Planning Commission's denial without prejudice, that's what we would do if that was the case. It would go back to him, or he'd have to work with that, correct?
Correct.
All right, that's what I think.
Robin?
I don't think that the first two variances are a big deal either, quite honestly. It does come down to the parking available. The renderings, you know, I don't have a lot of disagreement over that. I think, you know, with the location of the facility, it's one of the first places we see when we come into town, when people are coming over from Silver Lakes, that's what they see. So I am all for improvements and, you know, having you get more business and all that kind of stuff. But then there's nothing more frustrating than trying to go someplace and not having a spot to park. So, and creating havoc on Old Hamner at that point in time, because we don't know, you know, there's Caltrans, and I know a lot of us use that for parking when we're over in that area, and we're probably not supposed to, but it would just create a lot of havoc, I think. So if the parking can be some way figured out, I think it's a great idea. But, you know, my concern is, I feel like we're getting a lot of this stuff up to the council that, you know, is coming to us on appeal that are, I don't know if it's personality differences or what, or people are just thinking, "Well, I didn't get my way, so I'm going to appeal," when things should be taken care of in Planning Commission. So just a little more working out or massaging things, I guess. I don't know how to articulate that appropriately. So I agree with my fellow council members that this can go back and be worked on and taken care of there. If we uphold, so my question would go back then to fees. So if we uphold Planning Commission and the applicant goes back, are there fees associated with that again, or what's the system on that?
Yeah, new fees, because the old project was denied, so anything new is new applications, new fees.
Okay. That's all I have this time.
I'm sorry, Rob, it was after our conversation that I called and said, so the American Legion, and I called the American Legion, and they had said they had eight spots, and I found out they had no spots. Some of my questions are, let's say, the Manny property, because we talked about this, would they assign in perpetuity? I mean, in other words, let's say that property gets sold and they put a hotel there, is that hotel then bound to have parking for Mavericks? Those are some of the questions that have to be asked. They are. And that concerns me. I know that he talked about having a shuttle to his other property on Hamner, but what you told me here is it has to be off-site within 200 feet.
Correct.
We talked about the Starbucks Center, and there's no agreement apparently between the property owners between fifth and sixth, or there is an agreement that's bound into the deed.
They, by conditions of approval, have to share their parking amongst each other.
Okay, well, I'm confused, because, you know, Rob is a former councilperson, he says that agreement doesn't exist, so that's something, if it goes back...
It's by conditions.
Okay, all right. So are there a lot of reciprocal parking agreements in the city? Or are they by condition in these, because what you say here, it's mainly the properties individually developed, shopping centers?
There are some. There's, the Target Center has one, the Home, what's the name of that store? The craft store.
Lobby.
That center has one.
Did that have enough spaces when it was built?
Yes.
For sure?
Yes.
Okay. And then have there been any buildings, and November 2009 is an important date, obviously, that's when it got in council, have we approved anything that has not had enough parking spaces?
No, well, we've never approved anything that didn't have enough parking spaces. They might have had a shared agreement where nighttime users use it when the daytime users are closed, but everybody has to provide their parking.
And then I had, so the American Legion we talked about, I'm the one that pulled this, because I talked to Rob, and you talked about maybe making your building smaller and so that you could find a way. And the parking, especially the American Legion, I got thrown that curve this afternoon. I was like, "They don't own anything?" And because they think they own at least eight spots. And so, and then the Manny property, that makes me nervous, because if they're going to enter into that agreement, are they, I mean, that's forever. They will have to provide parking, and you'll have to maintain that parking lot. Parking, that's the issue. I mean, if you made the building smaller, would it, could there be a way to have enough parking there?
Well, without a shared parking arrangement, the maximum he can get on that site is about 32, so the maximum building size would be 3,200 square feet. But without engineered drawings, I'm not committing to anything.
And in terms of the parking lot by the library, since the City of Norco owns that, would it be in the best interest of residents for us to enter into a parking agreement that would force that to be a parking lot? I don't think so. I mean, in perpetuity.
That's counsel's call.
Yeah. But I mean, for me, it would just be, what do you guys think?
Mr. Mayor, there is a shared agreement with the Legion on that parking lot for use.
Right. Well, I mean, with us, the City of Norco, yeah. And right now, Caltrans still owns the lot, so technically, they let us park there, but they don't have to if they don't want to. So we have no say over that. We couldn't let that be used anyway because we don't own it.
Mr. Mayor, what's the Manny property that you keep referring to?
The Manny property is where the old Newssum House sits, the third house built in...
Oh, the White House with the weird driveway?
Collector's item.
Oh, the White House with the weird driveway that's blocked off.
That's where the Newsoms lived. They were war heroes.
Okay.
But apparently, when talking to Rob, he said he might be able to get an agreement to park there. And the problem is, there, you've got a slope. And if you're going to, what I'm hearing is, he would have to grade all of that and put it into a parking lot, and you'd have to maintain it with the lights and all that kind of stuff. He's in shock. It's not our overflow, it's actually owned by the Corona-Norco Unified School District now, if I'm not mistaken. And they actually really don't like it that we park there. So, technically, we park illegally there, if we park there. But wouldn't that rental have to carry with, as long as it was Mavericks?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah, okay.
May the applicant come to the podium?
Yeah, absolutely, come on up. Well, the thing is, is the question now is, should we continue it? And should we send it, what should we do here? What does council, hang on one sec, we're trying to figure, because we've all gotten a curveball here. All right, all right, let's hear you.
Okay, I have, well, you mentioned Starbucks. From Starbucks to the hotel is 1,700 feet. And Steve says it's okay for people that need to park at Starbucks if it's full, to park as far as the hotel. From my piece of property to my other piece of property on Hamner, it's about 1,300 feet, which is about 400 feet closer. So, if it's okay for Starbucks to park as much as 1,700 feet away, then 1,300 feet away for my parking, and I own both pieces, and if I own both pieces, I think the code doesn't call for reciprocal parking agreement. But I turned one in, saying that I agree with myself, and I was on both sides to work out an agreement. So, well, I turned it in anyway, because that's what they said. And that is two acres, and I only need a half acre to get 70 parking spaces. I worked a deal with the owner over at Taft and Old Hamner for a half an acre for 70 parking spaces for overflow. It's the closest piece of property to my piece of property that's not public property. It's the closest thing. So, I think the 200 feet should be discounted or thrown out, because there is nothing. Public parking spaces within one block of my place, just public parking spaces, is over 400. And at night, other than Riley's Gym, and in that 400 does not count the parking spaces around Riley's Gym. So, which takes it probably over to 500. And late at night, most of those, if not all of them, except for Riley's Gym, is not used at all. And if I have to have, the closest parking I have is at Taft, which is 500 feet away from my property.
Is it the Manny property, or is it the property to the north?
No, it's the Manny property. I mean, Manny doesn't own it anymore.
But it's the hill one.
Well, yeah, but it's not up there, it's down at Old Hamner.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Between the old post office, with the old posse building, and Taft. And based on like, the social services office, when they needed more parking in overflow, they had that one acre pad at Town and Country, I believe, and Hamner. And all that was gravel for about the first five to eight years. And it didn't have any striping or anything. And it does now, it's paved. But when Starbucks went in, I looked at the paperwork, there is no reciprocal parking agreements among anything. And I have a copy here, if you wanted to, and I can look up the numbers really fast.
Apparently, it's conditioned, that's the, there wouldn't be a reciprocal agreement, Steve, it's conditioned with each property owner?
No, it says, "If it was required in the future, they would be willing to sign one." That's what it says. And it also said, when Starbucks was built, that there would be 383 parking spaces. And I took the liberty to count all the spaces as of last week, including the hotel, which is about 110, there's still not 383 parking spaces between Fifth all the way to Sixth. So, that was, oh, and that was in 2006, 10 years ago. So, in 10 years, they have not met item number 19 in their approval. And then there was item, I want to say 56, is what the city brought to my attention, which was, had to do with signing a reciprocal parking agreement if sometime in the future it's needed. But I think in the very beginning, it may have been owned by the same person. Now, there's about six different owners. And I wouldn't know if they would have the same requirements. And also in that approval, it said there'd be two places that serves food, where there were restaurants. And there's probably 10 restaurants between Fifth and Sixth. I mean, even the hotel serves food, you know? So, I'm just asking for the same thing, I'm short of parking spaces. We all know that I can use a park and ride. I went as far as going to San Bernardino and talking to Caltrans, and talked to the people in charge of parking rides, and they looked it up, and they said they have no intentions of doing anything in the future, or foreseeable future, I should say. So, I don't know how long that goes. But they don't tend on moving. And, you know, Golden Star Corporation, which is what I own, had Golden Star Cactus, I mean, Golden Star Cactus had Country Junction, and then I changed the name. But as long as it's been there, it's been using the Caltrans parking lot, and same as American Legion, you know, we share, you know, as well, they do use our parking lot, even though there's space the other way, but when they have the kids show up, you know, the military kids, they usually park in our parking lot, because their doors exit towards our parking lot. And they do their drills and stuff like that. We all get along good. But as far as reciprocal parking agreement, I don't think that if I get that reciprocal parking agreement at Taft, that they build a hotel there, it's reciprocal. And when I tried before to build on Hamner at my other two acres, the city told me that you couldn't build anything unless you had reciprocal parking agreements with your neighbors, that they wouldn't approve anything. And I brought that up to Steve on this place down here, you know, at the Maverick. Based on the city's rules before, when I went to the city, probably about eight years ago, they said that when major improvements are done or something, everybody has signed a reciprocal parking agreement, so there's no fighting. And I asked him about signing a reciprocal parking agreement with the city. That only seems to be reasonable. Doesn't mean that there's a reserve on those parking spaces. Perfect example is Starbucks. I read in the staff report, where Starbucks, because you talk about reciprocal parking agreement and not being, having their peak periods at the same time, Starbucks is open from about 5:00 in the morning until about 9:00 at night. They claim in the written report that they are only busy, and their peak period is from 7:00 in the morning to 9:00. And that way, it frees up the restaurant next to it that says, "Well, we're only busy from 11:00 to 3:00." We're open until 9:00, but only 11:00 to 3:00. And then, the flower shop says, "Well, we're only busy in the afternoon." So, everybody keeps counting these parking spaces. You look at the gambling hall that you guys voted to go in, they had 60 parking spaces. So, staff thought, "You need more, so we'll let you count them twice." Same building, so they let them count to 120. So, I went down there and counted them, there's 43 parking spaces. To get to that 120 number, they had to be counted three times. It's only one business. They open the doors, and they have gambling and stuff like that. Don't forget, this is the same gambling place that was turned down in Corona just before coming to Norco because of vice. And I'm sure this sheriff will say, "The gambling brings in vice." I would agree. But Norco, I think, was looking at the possible money that it would be bringing in. And, you know, a big brother next door, you know, voted it down, and they came here, and it got passed. And you see, it hasn't got very far. But they're allowed to count it three times. You look at Felipe's, Felipe's was allowed to go in, they don't have anywhere near the parking. You know, you look across the street where O'Reilly's just got approved, when you count Pat's Kitchen, O'Reilly's, not counting really the rest of them, and above Pat's Kitchen is two stories. There's not enough parking there. There's so many places that there's not enough parking. We mentioned the old Home Base, Hobby Lobby's at. I was on mayor at that time when that thing went in. Staff came to us, said, "Hey, they don't have enough parking." And my words to them exactly was, "Who cares? We want that business in this town." And since then, they put a lot more food places and retail places there at the end of where the Florida Core was. When I was on city council, that didn't exist. And they added that without really adding parking, except for behind the building, that only has access to the back doors of some of them. And you look at all the food places in there, I guarantee you, there's not enough parking. When Home Base went in, they had, I think, 1,100 parking spaces, and it wasn't anywhere near it. Brian Oldman and I, when Home Base went out of business, talked, and they said, "Before another business can really take over that large building, they're going to have to reduce the size of the building and get more parking spaces." That's what Brian said. But I wasn't on the city council at that time. But there's been a lot of things that have been let go, that people haven't been held to a rigid standard. He mentions that there's somebody that has a parking agreement. I pulled the files on a number of businesses that should probably have a parking agreement, to find one, because they had to be approved by the city attorney. And I'm not one to reinvent the wheel. I'm one to find a copy of it, make a copy, white it out, put my name on it, and send it in. Because obviously, if it's good enough for them, it should be good enough for me. I haven't been able to find a single business that has it. He mentions a Target Center. I just happened to be on city council when that Target Center went in. And I know exactly how all that stuff worked. And they could have a parking agreement. But I guarantee you, if Denny's needed a reciprocal parking agreement, they signed it, they didn't say, "Okay, the first 15 spaces towards Target can't be used by Target." It's reciprocal, you know? Sometimes you need five, sometimes you need 10. You know, and same thing with my place. My busy times, my peak, Friday and Saturday night from midnight to 2:00 in the morning. There's nobody else open. That's when my peak is. But Steve wants me to have my peak at all times. I want to have a retail store there. He says, "Well, you need five parking spaces for that retail store, even 2:00 o'clock in the morning." And then I have a kitchen, then in the last 28 years, we've had one cook, five parking spaces, all the time, whether it's open or not. The burdens that's being put on me are not being put on everybody else. I ask that the council be fair, okay? Have integrity, honesty, and being fair. I don't want more than everybody else is getting, but I certainly don't want less. And I think that's, you know, being fair, because as everybody knows, there's liberty and there's tyranny. And I think I've been feeling the tyranny side of a lot of things here lately. Not as bad as it was 10 years ago, but still. And I think that I should be allowed to build there. Matter of fact, I mentioned the gambling hall across the way, it's in the staff report that they have this big room that holds a lot of people. And if the parking isn't adequate, they have to be willing to close that down to reduce the number of people inside the building. And that's in the report. Like I said, I got a lot of reports from a lot of different places. And Steve can attest that I've been, I've spent some time sitting at a desk for hours, reading everybody's reports. You know, "Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm asking to be treated fairly." That's it, just fairly. I own the property, I'm a resident here in town. The people that built the Starbucks isn't residents. You know, they built the strip center. Other than probably Starbucks, they had no clue what was going to go in. They built a 3,000-square-foot furniture store, and the city bought off on it, said you only need two parking spaces for 3,000 square feet, one for the employee and one for a customer, because actual stores just don't get customers, you know? And if it was a warehouse, you required two parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. So, that would have been six. So, here's a retail store requiring 30% or 33% of what would normally be required for a warehouse. But there's all kinds of, I wouldn't call them deals, but just considerations that's been given to other businesses. You know, clearly, they don't have enough parking, and they don't have the 383. And, you know, I think that on mine, that I want to be able to use the Caltrans, that half acre down there, I should only have to grade it to the point that the city lets other people have overflow parking. Chances of me needing that parking, no. But I'm still going to pay for it and rent it. And then, and that rental is going to say, once it's a reciprocal parking agreement, that kind of goes away, because everybody's going to have to sign a reciprocal parking agreement. The city's not going to let them go forward without signing a reciprocal parking agreement. Then that brings the city into it. The city's going to have to agree to the same thing.
But I thought there were no reciprocal parking agreements.
What's that?
I thought you couldn't find any.
Find any what?
Reciprocal parking agreements. So, why would we all of a sudden change and do a reciprocal parking agreement? How many spaces are at, what is the deal with the gambling house, for want of a better word? Is it really 120 spaces? That's not my recollection, but...
I don't know what the number of parking spaces was, but they did get a shared parking agreement, and it did, it was for the same building, because the gambling part of it is a daytime operation, and the restaurant is a nighttime peak hour. That's why they were allowed to prove it. So, it was kind of twice, not three times.
I see, okay.
Well, no, the reason I say three times, because there's only 43 parking spaces there. And I was at the city council meeting, when it was said that they had 60, and that they're going to let them count them twice.
All right, what do you guys want to do?
You can't count parking stalls on an abandoned project. The project's not finished, Rob, so I can only think that if Steve had 60 on the plan, and there was two splits on it, then it's going to be in that 120 range. But I guess what troubles me somewhat that is, now taking the rules, and we're just kind of changing them into guidelines, that, I was on planning when we had the Starbucks development, and, you know, Starbucks businesses obviously increased. But I think at that time, 2008 approximately, or 2007, no, it was way before then, wasn't it?
2006.
Five or six, that we were conscientious and aware of the parking requirements for that center. Now, my question goes to Steve, is, I can't recall that far back, but...
I got a copy of it, if you want.
No, I mean, it wasn't reciprocal from Starbucks to whoever was in the future on that, to move in there, was it?
They do have a reciprocal park, or a shared parking agreement for that center, and...
For all the members of the center?
All of them.
For the businesses, right.
For the 3,000-square-foot unit in the back, it was calculated as a manufacturing space, because it was going to be a bed store, and they just don't draw, it's not like a Barnes and Noble, you know? They have very few people that come in. And it's been mostly empty ever since. A bed store never did move in there. So, there was a parking arrangement, and there was a lower rate applied to that back unit.
Right.
Because it wasn't going to be a prime retail site.
And I think part of it, Rob, is that we addressed that at the time, okay? That it was adequate, but to go back that, you know, 10 years ago or 11 years ago, this is how we studied it and how, what we recommended to council at the time. I don't know how it really works in your situation, that you just don't have enough parking on your property. So, I'm getting a little confused, like when you're talking about Manning's property, that if you were to have a shared agreement, and then that's developed, why would I want to have a shared agreement with you? That would inhibit my investment.
Because the city won't let you build unless you have a shared agreement with your neighbors. Shared agreement doesn't mean that you have reserved parking spaces that no one else can use.
I guess I'm getting a little confused. You're saying the Manny property is, wants to, whoever owns that today wants a... You're saying the Manny property is, wants to, whoever owns that today wants a...
He apparently says that.
They want to enter into an agreement with you for shared parking? Reciprocal parking agreement?
No, I want to enter into an agreement with them. And we have an agreement over the phone, it hasn't been signed yet. I thought it would be signed by today.
But what you're saying then is, that they want to enter into a reciprocal parking agreement with you?
No, it's renting the half acre of land until they build.
And then what?
Then it'll be a reciprocal parking agreement.
I would never make that deal, Rob.
Who couldn't sell your property?
Yeah.
He wouldn't be able to sell his property.
Oh, yeah. Because everybody has assigned reciprocal parking agreements. I mean, he even mentioned the Target Center. You know, the reciprocal parking agreement is not a big deal. All it is, is saying that people can park on your property, even if they're not going into your business.
Yeah, just as a side note, does the new veterinarian hospital, my understanding is he gets along very well with the batting cage, but do they have a reciprocal agreement or just...
No, that they met all their parking on site.
But I mean, he said, because at night, there was nobody at his veterinarian clinic, he's going to allow them all to park on his lot.
Yeah, he can let them, but that's...
Yeah, go ahead.
With Dr. Wong's and the batting cage, they set their, we were, I was on planning with Commissioner Leonard, they actually made a gentleman's agreement on that, on that parking, to have it shared. And I recall, and Commissioner Leonard could probably correct me if I'm wrong, when they did Sliders, the OTBS over there, they also, we all, that's what we talked about, was the fact of parking. It was a very serious consideration, because that parking not only is the immediate area, but it's the one down below where the wall is. And there were, they had to make some of their times for people across the street, there was a parking area there, and then across from Carl's Jr., because of the time elements or... But the business next to Sliders, the Cowgirl, was very adamant that there had to be parking there, because it wasn't fair to them, so to have a shared parking, so just like that. That was part of the conditions of that use permit. There was no shared reciprocal, it's conditions that were in there. And Rob, you have that two acres across on Hamner, up the street, up...
Yes.
I'm looking, you've got a beautiful building. That's, your concept is great. I mean, you're trying to put it right there in that corner. You've got a beautiful, but why should you stick it over there where you've got more room? I'm just asking that, because...
Well, one is the Tump fees, that started in about '07. So 150, within three years, by '09, it was 500,000. That wasn't a permit to do nothing. Just to do something was 500,000. And now I'm sure it's a lot more than that. You know, that was probably seven years ago. So, yeah, but the closer to the off-ramp it is, the better the visibility. And the way this is designed, if I wanted to design for myself, I'd have it facing Hamner, where the busy street is, and I'd put it up as close as I can and put my parking in the back. But it's not. It's designed where people are going down Sixth Street, they can look down in front of my building, all the way down, and see the other development that's going on. I looked at this as being a catalyst to get things going in that area. And I think, personally, I think it's a good building. If you guys wanted it all wood, I could do that.
I think the architecture is great. I have no, I have no problem with you building. I mean, I don't want us to be the anti-business thing and anti, because it's, it comes back to the parking, and the whole parking situation, and what we can allow, and what we, you know, we could, you know, I'm not afraid of giving up five or 10 spots or something like that, but from 33 to 107, that's a big difference. And I, here's my problem with shared agreements. And when you talk about, you, it's like Councilman Newton said, you've got the other building sitting over there, the nanny property, that he enters into agreement with you, and he ends up, hey, I want to build this nice hotel, or some big restaurant there? He's stuck. And there isn't anybody that can see that and look at that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't buy it if I've got, if I've got to make a deal with, it's already there, a pre-existing condition that allows, that would stop my buying, because I wouldn't, I don't want to make another deal when your business is there. It just doesn't make any sense to me, to enter into an agreement with him. And that's probably why he's holding off. I mean, I wouldn't. It's like the Legion, you already know they can't make a deal. Be honest with you, I don't know where this is going to go, and what to do with, while they're at council, but I think he needs to go back to the Planning Commission, back to Planning Department of Commission.
Yeah, but I don't want to spend another $11,000 to have them review it. That's what it was the first time around.
And Rob, and I understand that, but you threw this thing at them when it wasn't ready.
What's that?
In reading the staff report, it appears that this project wasn't ready to go to the Planning Commission initially, before that, before it went there. I mean, I'm reading what is here, unless you tell me something different.
Okay.
It wasn't, from what staff is telling me, this, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, this wasn't ready to go to Planning Commission before they got it.
Correct.
And so they did, the Planning Commission made their decision based upon the information that was here, correct?
Correct.
And the applicant did have the choice of not going to them, of going to Planning Commission or not, knowing that it could fail.
Correct. Okay, on the first page, it shows my property where it says Mavericks, and it shows the distance from Starbucks to the hotel, which is 1,700 feet, and from my property to my other piece of property, which is 1,300 feet, and 500 feet from my property to the property located on Taft. And then what we were talking about, if you look on the second page, you can see where it's highlighted on number 19, and that's where it talks about the 383 parking spaces that's required for Starbucks. And then on the next page, number 64, it talks about signing a mutual agreement, should one be required in the future. You know, because we're talking about the Maverick here. If you go to the last page and read that paragraph that has the highlighted mark, which is the second paragraph, Councilman Greg Newton was there, and he remembers exactly that's correct, that last page, where it's a little highlight mark on the last page.
That's your August 31st, 2011 CUP?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the one that says, you know, that the patio deck, everybody remembers the patio deck, how much trouble I went through. And it says here that Jim Daniels was the one that actually personally supervised its construction. We all know that that's true, don't we, Steve? And then the page right before it, which I would call the Coupe de Gras, the same paragraph. Notice the date at the top is the same as well. This is what the official records should reflect. But the first page that you read, saying that Steve, or that Jim Daniels was the one that supervised its construction, is the one that's actually on file in the city. And it was replaced. And that's, and the page second to the end was the paragraph, the way it should read. And Steve took liberty to actually commit fraud, because he testified that both of these were true and correct. And he admitted to making changes, and he says he often does it, makes changes to official documents after you guys look at them. Because it kind of reminds me of when President Kennedy was killed. They said, nothing's going to come out for 60 or 70 years. And why is that? Nobody's going to be around when that happens to question it. Same thing here. Chances are, this will never come up. And if it does in 20 years, none of you guys would be there that had anything to do with it, and you wouldn't know. Except Greg has the advantage that he was here when it was first done, and he's on city council to tell you what the truth is. And, you know, Joe Gabels, I'm sure everybody knows him, he's the Prime Minister of Propaganda for Hitler, he said, the bigger the lie, the more people will believe it. And, you know, Hitler took that and said, you tell a big lie enough, over and over, and people will believe it. And what I'm saying is, Steve King, I mean, you heard of lying Hillary, I'm here to introduce lying Steve King. He has lied just about everything. And the staff report, I can go, everything that you may have an objection to, on what you think I'm doing wrong, and it's not true. It is not true. There's very little in the staff report that has any truth to it. And we can start with the seating. He wants to go based on a church, because he says there's no seating. It's not seating, he says there's no seating on the site plan. Well, I will attest, you don't show seating on the site plan, you show it on the floor plan. Staff gave me seven pages of things that they want to see on the plans, and it's under general notes. Everything they asked for is on it. That's why when we had the second meeting with staff, nobody had a comment except for the fire department, who asked that I show seating on the floor plan, and I did, right after that. So when it went to the commission, the seating was there. Steve King will claim today that the plans we first turned in, which was almost two years ago, are the same plans that the Planning Commission looked at. And that's not the case at all. The plans that were given to you, in no way. But, you know, trying to find that, the page that has everything, well, I have the seven pages of, like, corrections where they want to see on the plans, like a fire alarm system. They want to see a fire alarm system. You don't show that on the site plan, and you don't show it on the building plan, it's going to be on the fire alarm plans. And in general notes, it says that it's going to be designed to meet the fire department's approval. The sheriff's department asked for adequate lighting on the outside. We didn't go to the site plan and show the lights, we put down there that it would meet their approval. And the general notes, exactly the way it's supposed to be. Those plans met everything. There are so many things wrong, because I...
So just, just one second.
Sure.
And no offense.
Okay.
So, this, the deck, because I was involved in the deck, and I see the change, and so what you are saying is, you called Jim Daniels, and he permitted you without a permit to build that deck?
Well, no, he said that Jim Daniels supervised the construction of it.
Okay, all I can go by is what you're giving me here. Deck in question was constructed originally without notification to the city. The deck in question was constructed under the direction from the Community Development Director. You are a former councilman and a former mayor.
That's correct.
You're going to put people on a deck, and you didn't know if you needed a permit?
Well, I knew whether they needed a permit, I checked.
Well, I don't know why we're looking at this. I mean, I get that, because you're accusing a staffer of fraud, and you've sat where I'm sitting, and you know that's a really serious offense. So what I'm trying to figure out is, how do we make the nexus point? Because Rob, I'm really, you know what, you've got a council that's pulling for you here.
I know.
And the thing is, is that I don't understand why we're talking about your deck. What our problem is...
You know, it has to do with being honest, having integrity, being fair.
And I totally get that. And I, and so basically, what you're saying is, I asked a point-blank question. Since 2009, I asked if every single building had had enough parking. And I was told yes. Now, tomorrow, I'm going to do as I did, I've talked to you, I'm going to find out if they all did. But the question is, is one, does, for me, does the council want to tie up the Manny property, given that we're a half mile from the largest equestrian sports park in the nation? And two, are we going to, the difference between the two properties you cite, from my point of view, is, yeah, it's farther, but it's all one contiguous property. What you want us to sign off on is that you own a place where adult beverages are served, where people are going to cross, and I understand Uber, I understand you'll do the carriage rides, but the day you cease the carriage rides, then we close you down.
I'm willing to do that.
And if all of a sudden, that property owner who's leasing you the property says, guess what, you can't use my property anymore, you can no longer operate. That's the problem we have.
I'm willing to take that chance.
Well, but the problem is, is that we are trying to bring business to the city. We want to help foster yours, but we also don't want to tie up a bunch of properties. So I'm just uncomfortable that you're making, I'm sorry, but I'm really uncomfortable that you're accusing staff of fraud and things like that. You just said he was engaging, and I'm uncomfortable with that. So what I'd really like to do, if council doesn't mind, and if you want to continue on this track, well, listen, obviously, but I'm really uncomfortable with it, and what I want to discuss is your project, and how we can help you to proceed from now. This is a different council. I'm not going to go back to 1964 and give no parking spaces to the egg ranch. It ain't going to happen. Do you understand? I didn't approve any of the projects that you've named, except the one, and I'm very confident we have enough parking, but Greg made the point, it hasn't been built. So you can't count parking spaces. All I can do is move forward, and I have a job that I have to protect staff. And you've made some really serious allegations, and I just kind of...
You know what? And before I even said it, or uttered one thing, first of all, it's the truth. And what I did, is I checked with the city clerk's office to make sure that the audio tape for that date was still available, and it is. Don't take my word for it.
Well, and that's totally fine, but let's help you, if council doesn't mind, how do we want to proceed with this project? Is there a path? One of the problems we have is, you were given the option that you could proceed, and you, or it would be better if you pulled your permit, get your project more ready, and then propose it, but you wanted to go forward. One of the problems that we have is that it's going to cost money, staff time, to relook at your project. So we need to look at that particular issue. How do we proceed here, council? How do we move in a positive fashion to this wonderful building? And again, you told me you were willing to downsize your building.
Yes.
You told me that. So, and just so you know, that's why, that's why I pulled this.
That's right. And I'll be the last one to go back on something I said, and you're right.
So how do we proceed? How do we proceed?
But that was prior to the guy that owns the Manny property agreeing to rent it to me.
But I, we'll tell you right now, I have a hunch he's not going to sign that agreement.
Unless you guys contacted him.
I haven't. I don't even know who owns it.
Because we entered into a agreement.
So how do we, how do we proceed? I got two planning commissioners, former planning commissioners here.
Yes.
You almost had me, okay? That, and I remember way back with the deck and all that nonsense, okay? But once again, I think, I'm going to tell you straight out, you've done it to yourself to accuse a staff member of fraud. And you, like Kevin said, you being a former mayor and councilperson, if you are aware of fraud by a city employee, and you didn't go to our city manager and report that, it's, there's no excuse for that. I just...
It's in the court proceeding.
No, but that brings up another matter. When we had this deck, when we had our pseudo-court hearings on the Planning Commission in regard to Mavericks...
That was after it?
Yeah. The Planning Commission worked with you, Rob, and said, you know what, this is ridiculous. And you and I, and the other commissioners, we sat right here, we went through certain conditions, we negotiated, we both agreed, and you and I shook hands, and you said, that's the deal, and you turned around and sued us. So my motion, this all needs to go back to the Planning Commission. My motion is to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of this project.
Bring that's motion, and I'll second that one.
Mayor, I just want to state that I do have a card on this item.
We need to hear the card, since we've heard this. So can you please rescind your motion? So can you please rescind your motion?
Certainly.
All right, we're now open the public hearing.
Lance Gregory.
Mr. Mayor, Council staff, you know, I attended quite a bit of these planning commissions regarding this whole matter, you know, and I'm sure you guys are going to make the right decision, whether to send it back to planning or continue it. But the one thing, you know, that I think is really important that we look at is making sure we find some sort of concession here on both parties and make sure this works, because this is going to be an important corner for that, for what Edac is trying to do. You know, they've presented, you know, that concept of a retail center. It wasn't my idea, you know, I made one suggestion to that whole thing, but that's going to be a very important retail area for our town. And I'd really like to see, you know, a nice-looking building like that in that corner, you know, and I'd really like to see more consistency, when we're demanding Western theme of stuff, that we're consistent with throughout the town on that, because I've seen a lot of inconsistencies on that. So, you know, I'm sure you guys will figure out this whole parking issue and all that, you know, and I support Rob in trying to get this building done, and that will be the catalyst of getting that corner done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Closing public comments. Mr. Gregory makes a great point, and it's in the back of my mind. The point is, is that that is actually a very critical area that we hope one day will be developed, and I have concerns about it being tied up with parking, but I think that, I think to send it back to planning is probably the best thing to do, so...
I'll remake my motion. Like I said, I have no problem with the elevations, the variances are certainly workable, it all needs to be at a planning commission level. Kevin, you brought up that you had a discussion with the applicant about, I mean, the way you reduce parking requirements is reduce square footage. It all just kind of goes hand in hand.
What are the fees on this, Steve?
He always asks me application fees. I don't know, I don't have them memorized, but he, depending on the number of variances, if he's applying for the same number of variances, looking at between $10,000 and $11,000 for all of them.
So do we want to, in that motion, reduce his fees to cover costs, direct costs?
Not in my motion. I don't think we can afford to. There's still staff involvement, there's costs involved in that process. That, my motion stands that, which was my motion, to uphold the planning commission's denial, and no waiver of fees.
Any more discussion?
Councilmembers Grundmeyer, Hoffman...
Yes.
Mayor Pertham Newton...
Yes.
Mayor Bash...
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to go, because we're running out of time here, let's go to communications, staff communications, anything? I would like to close this meeting in honor of those officers that lost their lives back east. A moment of silence. Meeting is adjourned.[1788.33]